Good evening colleagues.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.[87.27][87.27][S01. Thank you. Official announcements. On behalf of the council, minutes of the previous meeting, does the council agree the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 4th of November 2015?
I was present to my honourable co-chair, Mr Speaker.
Thank you. Official announcements. On behalf of the council, I would like to congratulate all those with the Newcastle connection who were included in the New Year's honours list. On behalf of the council, I would like to offer condolences to the family and friends of Bert Moore, the former councillor and leader of the opposition, also Andrew Robinson, deputy lieutenant, the French honorary consul for the North East of England, and Cumbria, who recently passed away. And we'd like to remember our past colleagues and on a personal note, anyone you wish to remember who has passed away in 2015. Could I have a moment? The other thing I have been reminded of is that there is a book of condolences in St James's Park for anyone to sign on behalf of Pavel Sonicek. Could I have a minute's silence please? Thank you colleagues. take this opportunity to remind members that the application of the guillotine will not happen until 9pm rather than 8.30. Does council agree to receive the correspondence from the Minister of Sport, Tourism and Heritage? Thank you. We have received one petition and I'll invite councillor Bowman to present it on behalf of the residents of Redhall Drive.
This is a petition regarding the need for an additional pedestrian crossing on Redhall Drive area in Heaton. We call on Newcastle City Council to install an additional pedestrian crossing on Redhall Drive. The current arrangements, which are one crossing adjacent to the junction of Redhall Drive and the coast road, are inadequate as the remainder of Redhall Drive is without any safe crossing. Redhall Drive is a very busy road with a high and increasing volume of traffic and has a number of blind spots. Pedestrians, especially elderly people, people with disability and families with young children are at risk when crossing the road along most of its length due to the lack of any safe crossing area other than that coast road.
Thank you. I understand councillor Bell is not present this evening and that councillor Kemp will accept the petition on his behalf.
Lord Mayor, thank you. Councillor Bell will accept the petition and councillor Bead will respond to you in due course.
If it's to be helpful, councillor Kemp and councillor Bell, could I just remind council that we've actually already sorted this issue out? We have a new pedestrian crossing being proposed for Redhall Drive, Ellis and Abbey junction, which has been secured by the work of the Liddon councils over many years. That might reassure councillor Bead. Thank you.
Could you convey this to councillor Bowman? Thanks very much. Does council agree to receive the petition?
No.
Thank you. Public question time. We have not received any questions from members of the public for this meeting. We now have a presentation, Students in Newcastle Forums Annual Report. Before I ask councillor McCarthy to introduce this report for information and discussion, I would like to seek council's agreement to representatives from the Students in Newcastle Forum to help present the report, understanding order 29b. Does the council agree? Councillor McCarthy to move the report.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm really pleased to bring the annual report from the work of the Students in Newcastle Forum to city council tonight. I realise it's for information but I think it is an important piece of work that many of us are engaged in. I think, Lord Mayor, first of all, I'd like to place on record thanks for the support and commitment that we get from students and staff in both Newcastle and Northumbria universities as well as in Newcastle College. And indeed, the work of the forum couldn't happen without the tremendous support from officers of the local authority, so I think it would be helpful to record thanks to officers who support the work too. I'd just like to raise a few issues. There's a lot of detail in the report, Lord Mayor, and colleagues have had a chance to read it, but I think I just want to focus on a few things before I hand over to the students. I think the huge number of hours that students spend volunteering in this city is fantastic and a wonderful contribution to life of the city and, you know, please, students, when you go back to your student unions, pass on our thanks for that. I think the work that we've done with the students and indeed the staff at the college and both universities on electoral registration is crucial. We know that we lost a significant number of voters from the electoral registers and we are trying to address that and we can only do that in partnership with colleagues across the sector. Students continually raise with me and with others about the cost of travel in order to get to the college or to the universities and we are trying to address that. It's complicated but we are trying to address that. You'll see in the report that there are a number of events that have been held particularly for the international students who are here all year and don't necessarily have the same level of kind of family support that British students would have when they're living in the city and so there's been a particular focus on support for international students. And then, Lord Mayor, there's the general work that we do all the time, which is about making sure students are safe in the city, making sure that we have clean neighbourhoods and that we're dealing with the health needs, in particular of students. And one of the focuses of this year's work has been about the so-called legal highs, you know, the psychoactive substances that are readily available across the city. And I think in trying to work in partnership, we're raising awareness about the risks that students take if they try out those substances and obviously working with the police and with our colleagues in community safety and indeed in Vera Bead's office, we can address that. Lord Mayor, I'm really pleased we've got the three presidents here with us tonight. Adam and Dominic are from the two universities and I'm delighted that Jack Stoker is here tonight. Jack was elected only this week as president of Newcastle College, so well done. We love to see democracy in action and it's wonderful that you're here in your first week. And, Lord Mayor, my last comment is to say thank you very much to, and I'll ask for this to be passed on to Francesca. Francesca has been involved in the student forum for two or three years now and has been a really strong advocate from the college to make sure that the college students get mentioned at all opportunities, so I know Jack will be picking up the reins and taking that work forward as well. So if I can please hand over to the students. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Could I ask the students to come forward and could you please introduce yourself before making your report? Thank you.
All right. Hello, I'm Adam Crawley. I'm the president of Northumbria Students' Union. So I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to talk about a couple of things that our students do to benefit the community here in Newcastle. One of our largest volunteering strands is what we call NSU Community. It's a broad overarching project that's run by students for students. They do various events throughout the year. Most recently, we had a Christmas volunteering week. So that included things such as making Christmas cards, collecting donations for the crisis centre, as well as loads of other projects that they do. A couple of other highlights over the last year has been our Project ICE, formerly known as IT Classes, where students helped adults who were struggling with digital literacy learn how to use computers so they went around with time at home, so on and so forth. And they recently earned a certificate for achievement in adult learners' work this year. Another thing is the knitting project. A very dedicated small group of people knit various little things that go towards charities such as cancer research and they also make those nice little hats that go on innocent smoothie bottles, which is a nice little perk. And another one of our growing sections that we have is Fast Friends, which is our sort of friend-making project that we do. So we subsidise various events to Anna Castle, to the Bee, so on and so forth, particularly aimed at international students who don't necessarily know what there is to do in and around Newcastle. As a part of this, we've also set up a buddying scheme where students get a one-to-one buddy so they get to meet up with them over a couple of weeks to see how they settle in to Newcastle. And all of this is without mentioning all the other things our 100-plus societies do for the community. So that's what we've done. A couple of things that we'll be planning to do over the coming year. One of the SUs campaigns is our Money Matters campaign where we're trying to raise much awareness on how students can save their money and use it properly and efficiently and contribute to society by using it in the right ways. So that'll be given practical help through things about things like housing, food, entertainment, so on and so forth. And we'll also be lobbying the university to plug the gap left by cuts to disabled students allowance. That's another one of our big pieces. Coming up next semester as well, we have Community Week in February, which is also run by NSU Community. This includes things from card making, flower sales for Valentine's Day, random acts of kindness, giving out freebies, free hugs, heating litter picks and beach cleans. And a final thing I'll talk to you about is our vice president of welfare, Matt Ordin, is focusing on a campaign combating Islamophobia within the university and the local community. He'll do this through workshops, awareness-raising videos and working with the local community about reporting hate crime. That's just a few things that we've been doing. So as you can see, Northumbria students take pride in being part of Newcastle and relish the opportunity to volunteer in their community. So that's enough from me, I'm going to pass over to Dom.
Thank you, Adam.
Hello council, I'm Dominic Fairan, the president of Newcastle University Students' Union. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. So to start with, we've just set up a community tab on our website titled Love Newcastle where students can access information about being residents in Newcastle. The information they receive follows the lifecycle of a student, gives them advice on coming to Newcastle, living in Newcastle and leaving Newcastle. There's information on there such as bin collection dates, information about your local councillors and residents associations, advice for getting to know neighbours and contributing to the community, just amongst other things. We had a big push on voter registration last year, so we had a sustained month-long campaign to educate students about the importance of voting and how to register just prior to the general election. We also set up a booth outside the front of the Students' Union and signed up over 800 students on the spot, as well as doing other similar things around student halls. We had a campaign at the end of last academic year called Leave Newcastle Happy. This was to encourage students to donate their unwanted items to local charities. We sent students out into North and South Jessman to deliver our leaflets and donation bags and gave telephone numbers on the bags for pickup of donations by the charities. The Students' Union also put large donation bins in central points. Local businesses in Jessmond as well were given bags and that was a great success in building positive relationships between the students and residents. We also undertook a number of street cleaning activities called Jessman Tidy Up throughout the year, where our students teamed up with local community organisations and went out with bin bags and cleaning equipment to tidy up the local area. One of the days was actually even covered by The Chronicle. At our recent housing fair, we invited the council to have several stores for things such as EnviroRecall, council tax and how to deal with noise complaints amongst other things. The aim of this was to educate students about how to best give out moving into private accommodation. Luke Allison, our welfare and equality officer, has been running various campaigns throughout the year for things such as Black History Month, LGBT Week and Inspiring Women Conference, just to name a few. Our community reps, which we have 20 this year, will be attending residential meetings and coming up with new ideas for community campaigns. We also had 5,613 students volunteer last year in various capacities and here's just a few. So over the Christmas period, our students worked with a local homeless charity launching a shoebox appeal. Students worshipped eight boxes of essentials for both people and dogs, from food and warm clothing to foil blankets and torches. The feedback was incredible with over 50 volunteers contributing hundreds and hundreds of donations. Also, over the course of the academic year, our students have been involved with countless local beach cleans and street tidies throughout Castle Leesers, Heaton, Tynemouth and South Shields. We'll be hosting more this term through both our rag week and student volunteering week. Particularly popular with our international students was Cockle Park Farm and it's one of our biggest and longest-standing projects. Fresh plants and produce are grown all year round by project workers and students, all of which is brought back and sold for small donations in the union. In terms of plans for next year, obviously we'll be continuing all the good work we've done this year. I was speaking to the university about having free bike likes for students, so that's to improve student and residents' safety. We've also got a scheme for students to be able to take out gardening equipment. Obviously lots of students would like to be able to tidy up the property but without having the proper equipment, it's obviously hard for them to do. We've also got the Get to Know Your Neighbours campaign. Obviously a lot of the issues that are brought forward can be mitigated by just knowing the people you live around a lot better. And we're also promoting a housing reviewing website called Student View, which can help with lots of the issues to do with students and moving into private accommodation. But anyway, thanks for listening to me speak. I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'm Jack Stoker, I'm the newly-elected president for Newcastle College Students' Union, just on Monday actually, so please bear with me. First of all, I'd like to start us off by saying 2015 was a fantastic year for Newcastle College Students' Union. We had two awards. Our first award was from the annual learner voice practitioners award and that was to be highly commended in the North Region Institution, within the North Region Institution, sorry. Our second was from NUS and UKCSA and that was an internationalisation awards organisation for excellent support in foundation education. Now, from that, we saw an increase in our international student intake and that was by nine percent. Now, this definitely shows how keen students are to learn and study in the North East and also Newcastle College. We also saw in May 2015 that there was a general election, quite obviously. What we did was to help engage with the students. We went out, we gave out voting registration forms and offered online registration support so it was a lot easier to be able to do that. And we had a party tea party where we invited local MP candidates to come along and have a question-and-answer style debate with the students and over 50 students did turn up, so that shows the level of engagement that there was. Now, in terms of what we do with the community, we helped with People's Kitchen, we started a summer school for children whose parents couldn't get the time off work unfortunately. We helped with the Scouts Association, St Oswald's Hospice. We even made a Christmas party for the Elswyke Care Home. We helped Macmillan, Teenage Cancer Trust, Dementia Care, British Heart Foundation and also the special care baby unit at the RVI. All terrific work. Now, from that as well, what we also give to the community, we have a counselling and wellbeing service which we provide for our students. And now, at the end of 2015, we reached a record number of 242 referrals. Now, the council wellbeing service saw that and we've been able to put together an enrichment programme and this is to focus on social isolation and self-confidence. Now, from those as well, we picked even further and we found that bullying and exam stress were the two main reasons for these issues to keep arising. So in terms of those two, that will be our campaign focus for the next year. So thank you very much for listening, everyone.
Thank you gentlemen, if you can take your seats please. Could I ask for questions which will go to councillor McCarthy? Councillor Kane, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I welcome this report as councillor for the Ouzburn Ward, which has the highest student population in the city? It's obviously a very big issue for students, for local residents and for the police etcetera, etcetera. The report really does set out a huge amount, the huge amount of ground that the forum covers every year. It'll be no surprise, I think, to members of the forum or even maybe members of this council that I'd like to focus on the Leave Newcastle Happy campaign, which I'm very pleased with because I've been banging on about this for two or three years now. It's good to see Newcastle University really give it a go. I do think this is an opportunity for the council to help out much more than it's actually doing. We're meant to be a cooperative council, this is a joint problem of stuff being left behind and the charities who are contributing, some obviously more than others here, because it mentions that some of the local charities were very reluctant, those charities are actually the official way the council is meant to recycle fabrics, for example. And as I understand it, they get credits for doing so. So I think rather than the Students' Union, you know, obviously they will be very good at getting the students involved, but if there's problems at the back end of actually getting this material collected and shifted through the charities, I'm sure the council could do much more. But that's just really a comment on what's been another excellent year for the forum, so if I could also add my thanks to those of councillor McCarthy for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kane, councillor Higgins.
Yes, thanks Lord Mayor. Just to thank councillor McCarthy again for this very interesting report and just to echo my comments as well about the tremendous contribution that students make to life in our city. I hadn't been aware of the range of voluntary projects that students are involved in and particularly environmental projects, which I think are tremendously important. And just one I want to pick out and I've got a question linked to this, I don't know whether councillor McCarthy or one of our student guests would be able to answer this. I was particularly intrigued by the Gorilla Gardening Group, which, when I read the piece, it's not about large hairy animals, but is actually about this, what sounds like a really exciting partnership initiative around the Swan Island project. Now, I don't know whether this gardening group or this environmental group is an ongoing thing because if it is, I'd be interested to know whether they've got further projects in the pipeline or whether they would welcome any suggestions from councils like myself about projects they might get involved in in the future.
Thank you councillor Lawer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I really just wanted to make a comment and thank you to the student forum. Before Christmas, I took part in an all-parliamentary group on students which was chaired by Ben Howlett MP and I really want to thank the members of the forum because they came to discuss things with me on some, on issues. And I was delighted to share some of the innovative work of the students' unions and the breadth of their volunteering, which I used during the presentation and was astounded to find that they had 300 or 400 different things, volunteering activities going on just at Newcastle College alone. We're actually waiting for the report to be, come out, a draft report anyway, and as soon as I've got it, I'll share it with the student forum if that's okay.
Thank you. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just before I make a comment on the report, can I just take the liberty just to pay a credit to our fantastically hard-working staff in residents and volunteers that are currently battling against some of the weather conditions that we're seeing here in Newcastle and across the rest of the region as well?
Please do.
They're doing absolutely sterling work out there at the moment.
Yeah.
Lord Mayor, I just wanted to welcome the report as well. I'm also a councillor for the Ouzburn Ward, which represents one of the largest student populations in the city and it's been an absolute pleasure to sit on the forum and work alongside students at the universities and be able to support the various different student groups that we have in the city all the time when they're here to study with us and many of which stay on in the city to work in the future as well and build their lives here. I want to particularly thank them as well for the work that they've done in my ward and the volunteering. There was a bunch of students in volunteer week in December who came out on a very, very windy day in Heaton on City Stadium and despite battling against the winds managed to collect 25 bags of rubbish, which was quite an incredible feat when it was difficult to remain vertical. I think it's absolutely fantastic work that the students' forum do and I wonder if the deputy leader could possibly comment on how successful that these things like volunteering activities, being active in the community, tackling issues that have arisen through things like antisocial behaviour or crime, which is often perpetrated on the students' victims, has built a more successful level of social cohesion in these wards that have significant student populations and are adding to the benefits of our communities rather than the negative that we've seen previously. And particularly whether the deputy leader could pay a comment on the success of this administration in supporting students to tackle the issues that they face here rather than previous administration, which was often blamed for using them as scapegoats to blame them for issues in those wards. And also the success of us standing up for the rights of students in this ward, in this administration, given that the opposite side previously argued about reducing the democratic rights, at least to vote, not new recently.
Thank you colleagues. Councillor McCarthy, do you want to respond please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't know whether Dom wants to pick up the Gorilla Gardening question, Lord Mayor, because I don't know the answer to that one, but if we're able to let Dom respond to that, would that be okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, the Gorilla Gardening is something that Newcastle University run, it's been run for the past few years. I'm not going to pretend that I know a lot about it, but it is something that is continuing, it's happening year on year. It's one of the few hundred volunteering opportunities that we have. So yeah, you can rest easy knowing that it's going to be happening again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Dom, because I didn't know the answer to that. Thank you colleagues for the comments and questions, just picking things up as I've recorded them, Lord Mayor. Councillor Kane talked about the agendas, I think, around the work of the forum, which have been huge, recognise the work of Leave Newcastle Happy and we will be discussing with both student unions and with the college about how we can extend that because it was a good piece of work, but it was only in part of the city and it was only Newcastle University who fronted that, so we obviously need to do a bit of work to extend that. Councillor Higgins referred to the contribution that students make to life in the city and I think they do make and councillor Powers referred to that too. They make a fantastic contribution, they help with the economy of the city and representing a ward that has significant numbers of students in it. Some of our businesses are very quiet when the students aren't in the city and I know that will affect the incomes of those small businesses. So, you know, we want to recognise the contribution they make to the economy, to the wider success of our city and of course we also want to provide them, Lord Mayor, with job opportunities in the future so they stay here and stay as part of the city into the future. So, you know, I do want to, as councillor Powers referred, claim some credit for that because it is under this administration that we have taken that forward and made sure that that has been effective. I didn't know that you were going councillor Lawer to the All Party Group. Yes, of course, we'd be very interested in hearing about that work. From all of the research that we have done about student forums, others have been trying to learn from what we've been doing in Newcastle because other cities that have similar, you know, similar university cities don't have the same relationships with their universities. So I think anything that we can do to extend the work would be really helpful. And, Lord Mayor, can we just place on record our thanks to our three students for being here tonight? I guess it's quite daunting for young people to come before city council, so if we can recognise that, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Give another round of applause. Thank you, you can stay if you wish. Does the council agree to receive the report?
Agree.
Thank you. Council tax base.
You can stay, if you wish. Does the council agree to receive the report? Council tax base and business rates base calculations. I will call on councillor Dunn to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Happy to move the report and the recommendations contained within the report, and indicating immediately that I do not accept the amendment that's been submitted in councillor Stone's name. Just want to briefly talk about the format of the report. The main recommendations are set out in paragraph two. In 2.1, members will be able to see that the tax base for the city as a whole is increased by some six hundred and ninety properties, the breakdown of which are detailed on page forty-eight of the report. Turning over to page, page forty, you can see that the, we're proposing to set the council tax collection rate beginning for 2016-17 at ninety-seven point five, which is an increase of half a percent. Now, that's also detailed on page forty-eight of the report, and I just want to say that that's quite a challenging target that we're setting ourselves there. It's a long-term target, not an in-year target, but we ought still to be striving to achieve that level, and that's exactly what we and our offices will be doing. The council tax base for each of the parishes is set out in the table. The proposed new scheme, revised council tax reduction scheme, which council is being asked to approve tonight, is recommended in 2.2, the details of which are the main elements set out in paragraph 4.7, and to note that the business rate base will be set and submitted to DCLG. Can I just briefly, I don't really want to take the full twenty minutes that I'm allowed here, Lord Mayor, I think that would be a bit silly. In April 2013, I think we have to remember, Lord Mayor, that the then coalition government of Tories and the Lib Dems abolished the council tax benefit scheme, and councils were then required to design a local council tax reduction scheme, and since then, this city has not revised or reviewed our scheme. We therefore carried out a consultation exercise on a number of potential options and changes to the scheme. For a period of eight weeks in October and November in 2015, all members of council were notified by email of the details of that, of the proposed changes, and that's detailed in the integrated impact assessment that's attached to the report. Main focus of the consultation was on the level of support that we offer, and the proposal to lower support for people with severe and enhanced disability premiums, the change to the backdating rules, and whether the council should increase council tax to fund additional support for the scheme. I have to say, Lord Mayor, there was not a single response from any councillor to the proposed changes when they received it for comment. The consultation was promoted widely through the council's website, Let's Talk Newcastle, via social media, and information was passed through to our partnership groups, and we wrote individually to specific people who would be expected to pay more in council tax as a result of the proposed changes. During consultation, a hundred and fifty-four responses were received, and there is an analysis of the responses in the report. Our, the council tax reduction scheme that's being proposed tonight, Lord Mayor, for 2016-17, is designed to be fairer to all working-age people, less complex to administer, and cost-neutral to the council, which is important, given the eight million pounds worth of cuts that we've already had in terms of the council tax reduction scheme since it was introduced. We have had to make some very difficult choices, Lord Mayor, in designing the proposed scheme, and we have taken it fully into account, into consideration, the reduction in funding from the government, the level of council tax arrears, and the impact of welfare reforms for all residents. In trying to be fair, we are increasing support for about slightly in excess of fourteen thousand working-age households who are currently struggling to get a job or to make ends meet due to low wages, zero-hours contracts, and impacts from other welfare changes, such as the bedroom tax, the benefit cap, and other reductions in both in- and out-of-work benefits. We firmly believe, Lord Mayor, that it is these people that we must help more, and it will mean reducing their weekly bills for a band A property by just under one pound per week. People who are in receipt of severe disabled premium or enhanced disability premium are entitled to additional financial assistance, unlike those on low incomes, and therefore we are proposing to bring their contribution in line with all other working-age people. We will, however, and I stress this point, Lord Mayor, we will, however, continue to ignore disability living allowance and attendance allowance in the assessment of the council tax reduction scheme, and this will bring our scheme in line with those of other councils in the North East and in the core cities who do not offer the same protection that we have previously given. This will mean, yes, there will be a slight increase for those, for some people in receipt of disability payments, just under six thousand people of around just under three pounds per week for a band A resident, and two pound fifty-five a week for those who receive a single-person discount. In summary, Lord Mayor, the changes are: all working-age people will receive maximum support of eighty-five percent of their council tax liability. We have removed protections from working-age people who currently receive the enhanced and severe disability premiums. Income from DLA and PIP payments will also be disregarded when calculating council tax reduction payments, and the backdating of council tax reduction applications will be restricted to four weeks. Lord Mayor, I think what you have here is a very thoughtful report, which has been worked on and studied for many, many weeks prior to the consultation period. What we're trying to do is make the scheme simpler for all working-age people, to make it less complex and to make it more equal, and that's what, we are applying the principles of the Fairness Commission that we brought in in this city when we took office after 2011. Lord Mayor, happy to move the report and reject the amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy, to second.
Can I second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor?
Thank you. I now call upon councillor Stone to move an amendment to the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I seek to move a very important amendment on behalf of the opposition. Our amendment seeks to modify the recommendations and maintain the essentials of the council tax reduction scheme in place in recent years. We believe the administration has got this wrong, and we are proposing a viable, costed, tried-and-tested alternative. We have grave concern about the removal of protection for the severely disabled. We have been approached by severely disabled constituents on low fixed incomes, and in many cases, very low quality of life, who are very worried about their ability to pay this. They are stressed and anxious. I have sat and talked with quite a few. We think it is wrong that they have been singled out to face an additional financial burden when there is, quite frankly, no pressing need for them to do so. We cannot countenance a policy which rightfully targets the severely disabled when there is no compulsion to do so. Now, we understand the administration's concern that government does not provide sufficient council tax reduction scheme funding to cover all needs, this is undoubtedly true, but it is untrue to argue, as the council has done, this move is a direct result of government decisions. This government has a power to set its own decisions and its priorities for its reduction scheme. It proposes that protecting the severely disabled exemption should no longer be a priority, despite the consultation showing most support for keeping the exemption and a clear majority against reducing disregard below twenty percent. It is not true this proposal is the result of government cuts. It is not true the council have done to say it will be broadly cost-neutral. It's actually more expensive than the existing scheme, and I think it's misleading of the report to claim that it is. I think that's a problem throughout our side. The council has sufficient funding in its plans to cover the cost of maintaining the current scheme with next to fifty-seven thousand pounds left over if it keeps the existing arrangements as set out in the amendments. Under our proposals, that fifty-seven thousand pounds could be of extra resource for the under-threats constituents of Vice Bureau, or keeping the disabled children's public station office opposed, which is currently under threat. The administration will portray this as providing a little extra support for those on very low incomes of less than a pound a week. Now, there are clearly a lot of people in the city for whom council tax is a very big burden, but the administration could have made a more progressive choice of funding an extension of the disregard to fifteen percent, would have been happy to consider supporting a reduction of scheme which redistributed from those who can afford it most, but that isn't the case here. This will give a tiny amount of additional help to vulnerable people, but it will do it by taking far more from people who are equally or more vulnerable. Lord Mayor, this is very politically revealing. It proves the administration is very cynically trying to make unnecessary cuts to the most vulnerable for political advantage, and it disproves the oft-repeated claim of the party opposite that it's all the fault of evil government. Inexplicably, in our view, this administration is choosing to target severely disabled. The opposition proposal is affordable, it's more compassionate, it prevents adverse inequality impact. The administration's proposal is less fair, less compassionate, and increases the adverse inequality impact. In that case, Lord Mayor, it flies in the face of its own Fairness Commission. The administration likes to claim it as protecting the most vulnerable. Tonight, that is being put to the test. After tonight, the council will not be able to claim it as protecting five and a half thousand of its most vulnerable citizens. Lord Mayor, all of us have severely disabled people living in our wards. The question before us tonight is whether we vote to protect them or vote to target them for a hefty tax rise. The amendment protects them and will maintain the existing level of support for other beneficiaries. I ask councils to do the right thing tonight and vote with the opposition to protect severely disabled people. Vote for the amendment, and on a day when Labour members in Westminster are openly defying their unpopular leadership, it would be good to see some of the same, some of the members do the same here tonight in the council chamber. Please vote against this iniquitous Labour disabled tax.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Faulkner, to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, if there's a criticism of this side of the council for not spotting this during the consultation period, and I accept that, then equally, there's a criticism shared by all members of this council, because either the members on the other side didn't spot it either, or they did spot it and it doesn't seem to be of any importance to them. So, there's a shared criticism. So, let's just take the issue on its merits, and I accept that there's, the administration has a dilemma in trying to implement a council tax reduction scheme, didn't want to be there, it's not a place you wanted to be in, I understand that, but I honestly think that this change that you are proposing is not adequately explained, or certainly not adequately justified in the paper. I don't really understand what changed your thinking, and I don't see why you think it's fair to trade off a ninety-nine pence a week saving for fourteen thousand people against a two pounds fifty-seven extra cost for nearly six thousand people. I don't understand, like councillor Stone said, why you would want to do it. You haven't really justified or explained it. Now, one, one observation that councillor Dunn made was that it's bringing the council in line with other local authorities. Well, actually, it isn't really. I think that's a slightly disingenuous point, because not every local authority has got the same basic council tax reduction scheme. A number of them, a number of them very close to us, still operate on the basis of the eight point five percent maximum contribution, and not the twenty percent, now you're proposing fifteen percent here. So, for disabled people in our city, they'll be asked to pay the new standard rate of fifteen percent, whereas in Sunderland and other local authorities around us, they will only have to pay an eight point five percent contribution. So, it's not the same. So, that argument is completely bogus and undermined, I'm afraid. And your point about, and I understand the point that people with severe disabilities have got some other sources of benefit support, but that's for a particular reason, that by and large, they've got special extra needs which involve considerable additional costs, not the least of which is transport costs. So, I'm really not persuaded by the argument made by councillor Dunn and by the author of this paper, and I do think, I would do urge members of the majority party to think again and vote for our amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy, reserve the, oh, sorry, we have a, we have a hand in the air. Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like my colleagues, I really am puzzled that the council plans to reduce council tax for working people at the expense of the severely disabled. It really doesn't make a lot of sense. If you look at the report, we did only actually get a hundred and fifty-four responses to the consultation, but even if you look at that, the report is very strange when it says, "All working people will receive a maximum support of eighty-five percent of their council tax liability." This means all working people will need to pay a minimum of fifteen percent, and then it goes on to say that of those people who took part in the consultation, this was the most popular option. Well, yes, forty-five percent of people voted for that one, fifty-five percent said it should be twenty percent or more, and so it's a clear majority are actually opposed to that suggestion. And even if you look at the question about disabled residents, the disregard, it's actually very difficult to understand unless you know what the scheme means. I think a lot of people would find that second question very difficult to understand of what it actually meant, and it's probably shown by the fact that twenty percent of people didn't actually answer it, and of those who did, a majority were opposed to it. So, the consultation doesn't support what you're planning to do, the mass don't really support what you're trying to do, the people who will get the benefits are only going to get a pound a week, those who actually have to pay extra will have to pay nearly three pounds a week extra, and that's an awful lot of money for disabled people. I think this is wrong. I really think you need to think again.
Thank you, councillor.
And councillor Faulkner chooses to describe this report, or its move, as perhaps as being disingenuous. He's, of course, an expert, and he's partier experts at the disingenuous. He seems to have forgotten in the first place, as councillor Dunn reminded us at the beginning of this debate, that the Liberal Democrats supported the complete change, the travesty that was the change in council tax support system. They went along completely with that. That is the source of the problem here. They've also gone along, of course, when they were in coalition, with the massive cuts, which we will see later reflected in the report on the social services in this city, upon which the people that they are tonight purporting to support, of course, are the principal victims of government policy which they completely signed up to. They omit to recall that something under, just under five thousand households of this city had to contend with the bedroom tax, which they voted for, and that at a cost of several million pounds to those households, and indeed, to the economy of the city. None of this, of course, could conceivably be described as disingenuous on the part of the Liberal Democrats. It is an amazing example of a party that is disowning its past and seeking to transfer... Well, well, of a party, of a party which...
Quiet, please.
A party which paid a heavy price for its past at the last general election, compensated, compensated to some degree, of course, by an influx of additional members in a place where I spend most of my time, to a completely disproportionate extent in terms of their achievements on the political front. However, 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 we have difficult decisions to make and difficult balances to strike in this city, and it does not seem to me out of order, although it's regrettable that we are in this position, and we shall see later, as we get into the council budget, how many more problems we have to deal with, that we look at the system and we look at what other authorities are doing. Of course, there are differences in the scheme, that's the whole problem with this scheme that the Liberal Democrats and their Tory colleagues came up with, when they changed the whole system. Instead of having a national system, we are reverting... Instead of having a national system, we are reverting to something like nineteenth century poor law with different schemes in different places and funded in a grotesquely unfair way at that. And they have to acknowledge their responsibility for that situation. The people who are unfortunately going to be hit by this change will often be dependent upon the social services that this city seeks to maintain in the face of considerable pressures, vast pressures, unprecedented pressures, actually, on the council's budget. We have to bear in mind that those services will be maintained as far as possible, but still with great difficulties and still with a likelihood of cuts. Of that, we hear very little from the party which has to plead guilty at Enery to part of the problems that we have now to deal with. Nothing is irrevocable, of course, and no doubt this council will review the scheme in due course and will take note of the impact that people are concerned about and properly are concerned about. But let's do so on the basis of a frank realisation of what got us into this situation in the first place.
Thank you, councillor. More questions? Councillor McCarthy, right to reach. Reserve the right to speak, sorry.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I just want to echo the comments from councillor Beecham. I think councillors Stone and Faulkner and Taylor ought to have thought of the compassion and those issues when they were in coalition and that evil coalition government dumped this. Lord Mayor, that evil coalition dumped this problem on our doorstep. It's entirely their fault, really. This, what we are putting forward tonight, costs the city council eight and a half million pounds or thereabouts, and we are trying to protect the most vulnerable across this city. Politics, Lord Mayor, is about choices. Sometimes those choices are extremely tough, and what we have tried to do is take a balanced view to be as fair as we possibly could to those who have been hit, as councillor Beecham says, by horrendous policies like the bedroom tax, and we won't let you on your side of the council chamber forget your contribution to that. The bedroom tax effects on our communities have been, on some of our residents, have been devastating. And what we have tried to do is come up with a scheme which is as fair as we possibly can. The rules that came with the council tax reduction scheme were that we had to protect people who were on pensions. We've tried to go further than that, but because of the unfair and disproportionate cuts on this city that your coalition government started us off trying to address, and none of you seem to take any responsibility for that or accept any responsibility for that, actually that's why we're in the problem that we've got before us tonight. What we know, Lord Mayor, is that some of the working age core in our city are really, really struggling, and whilst councillor Stone might not miss a pound a week, some actual families in this city are really, really struggling, and a pound a week, fifty pounds a year will make a huge difference to them, and I think we've got a duty to consider that when we look at these kinds of schemes. We have tried to take into account, as councillor Dunn has said, the disregards for people who receive disability living allowance, attendance allowance, we have tried to protect as far as we possible, as far as we possibly can. We do, we have to review the scheme on an annual basis, so of course we will keep this under review. And, Lord Mayor, as part of our financial inclusion work, we will continue to do as much as we can to mitigate the worst effects of this decision. We understand this is difficult for the five thousand people who will be affected by this proposal, but what we're trying to do is be fair to the fourteen thousand who we are trying to give a little bit extra to. All of that, as I say, Lord Mayor, is about political choices, and I think these choices are really tough. It's with a very heavy heart that we are doing this. We don't take delight, as some of our colleagues do on the opposite side of the council chamber, are laughing and taking relief out of some of this, we do not. We take this responsibility extremely seriously. We will be held to account for what we do, and we will do all we can to support, we do have a small amount of resources to support colleagues who, you know, residents who are struggling, and we will try our best to help them. I think we are trying to make the best job we can of what has been a very bad hand that has been dealt with us. It does, in contradiction to some of the comments from the other side of the council chamber, it does put us closer in line to other core cities and to other local authorities. Of course, some local authorities have managed to protect at eight and a half per cent, we're unable to do that, but some local authorities are in a different position, and that is part of the problem of the way this has been done. And I think as well, we've got to consider universal credit and how that will affect some of these residents because they're being hit all the way down the line, and we've got to take these decisions in the round. So yes, tonight, we're only looking at one aspect of what we do, but it is an important aspect in what we've tried to be as fair as possible and maintain what we can afford and protect the most vulnerable. So I hope that clarifies some of the issues that have been raised, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Could I call upon councillor Dunn to reply, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think when he moved his amendment, councillor Stone said it was an important amendment. You know, that's not my opinion, Jay. It's a divisive amendment, it's no good, it's trying to pit different groups of people in our communities against each other, and that's not what we're trying to do. We are trying to put something forward, a scheme that's being proposed here tonight is about fairness and equality. The point is, and I say it again, it is true, councillor Stone denied that it was true, it is true that the government has cut our available funding for the council tax support scheme, and I'm happy to support the details on that to councillor Stone if he wants it. This is not about setting one group of people about against another. It is about, sorry, he's spoken, he can't always...
Would you listen to the speaker, please?
This is not, we are not about setting one group against another. As for councillor Taylor, she says she's puzzled. Well, I'm sorry about that. You know, I think the report's actually clear, and the percentages of responses that she refers to in trying to aggregate them are incorrect. They're not cumulative, but they're responses to individual questions. And again, if councillor Taylor needs that explained, I'll be happy to arrange that. Councillors Beecham and McCarthy have already referred to the shocking financial position of the council, and I have no doubt that much more will be said about that in March. Council, councillor Stone is trying to stop this council helping over fourteen thousand low income families in this city. That's disgraceful, thank you. The Lib Dems were responsible for this cut when they were in office, and now in Newcastle, they're trying to stop us helping the very worst off residents in this city. Council, I ask you, urge you to reject the amendment and to support recommendations in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Under new legislation, as this comes under the heading of budget, we have to ask for a named vote on the amendment, please. Could you ring the bell, please?
Just a moment, really, Lord Mayor. I noticed that during the debate we just had there, that councillor Stone accused councillor Dunn of being a liar. Now, I know that in the House of Commons, that's unacceptable, and those comments have to be withdrawn, I just wondered if you had a ruling on whether councillor Stone should withdraw that comment?
Point's first my explanation, Lord Mayor. Councillor Dunn said that I lied about whether it is true that the government had cut the funding. I can read out the words of my speech back to her. I said the government have cut the funding to the council tax reduction scheme, so I think councillor Dunn should be apologising.
It appears we have six and a half a dozen of another, councillor. Thanks very much. Right, could we go to the vote, please, on the amendment? The amendment has lost twenty to forty-three. Could we vote on the substantial motion? Thank you. Again, a named vote, sorry, could you ring the bell again, please? I think I heard it, yeah, thank you. Vote finished. The substantial motion is passed forty-four to twenty-one. Thank you. Next order of business is the adult social care local account. I call upon local Kilgar to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to present the adult social care local account for two thousand and fourteen fifteen to cancel tonight. Earlier drafts of the report were seen by Health Scrutiny Committee and by Health Watch. Their very helpful comments and suggestions have been incorporated in the final version that's in front of you tonight. We've also acted on suggestions made last year and have published four supplementary fact sheets, giving more detail about specific age groups and services. Every local authority is required to publish an annual local account, which is part of the national approach to service-led improvement, and ours has been designed to be accessible to service users. It's basically a guide to how we're performing and what service users think of the care and support they receive. However, as the report explains, some of the information we were asked to gather and report on changed for the two thousand and fourteen fifteen survey, making year-on-year comparisons more difficult, and officers have tried to be explicit in the report where this is the case. For example, the number of people with physical disabilities who were supported by the council looks to have dropped significantly. However, that figure no longer includes people only receiving equipment, whereas in previous years, that figure was included. Indeed, you could be forgiven for thinking that the Department of Health was deliberately making such comparisons difficult in order to mask the impending national crisis in adult social care and the cumulative effects of five years of government cuts to public spending. Many of the questions the survey asks are perception based, and the information gathered doesn't solely reflect the performance of council services. A worrying increase of five per cent of people who felt socially isolated may well reflect the impact of the government's austerity programme, not only on individual residents, but also on the public and the community and voluntary sectors, who can no longer provide the same level of support and activities that they could only a few years ago. Indeed, it's astonishing, actually, that after five years of government imposed cuts, let's not forget a hundred and ninety-one million to date taken out of the council's budget, with a further thirty-two million pounds' worth of cuts next financial year alone, that satisfaction levels have actually remained so high. Eighty-eight per cent of respondents aged eighteen to sixty-four, and ninety per cent of service users who are sixty-five and over, said the council's care and support services had either remained the same or had improved on the previous year. I don't intend to repeat the information contained in the report, and members are welcome to contact myself or officers if they'd like more detailed information about the report. But I would like to highlight the statistics on page seventy-two, that show that the percentages of people who are extremely or very satisfied with their care and support, the percentage of people who found it easy to access information, the people who said that their care and support helped them feel in control of their lives and helped them feel safe, all increased last year. It is, I believe, testament to our social care staff that cuts to the social care budget have not been fully reflected into people's experience of the services that they receive. Of course, not every response was positive, and cuts to services do and will ultimately affect people's lives. Officers have been open about that in the report, including negative as well as positive quotes from service users to fairly reflect the feedback we received. While much of the data gathered was positive, we recognise that there are improvements still to be made, and officers will work with service users to determine what further service improvements can be introduced, given the current financial constraints. This Labour council has done its utmost to protect and shield our most vulnerable residents from government imposed cuts to service provision. However, given the scale of cuts already made and those still to come, along with the pressures of an aging population with increasingly complex needs, I would suggest that next year's local account may well paint a very different picture. I'm happy to take questions, Lord Mayor.
Any questions? Could we... Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I do think this report is fairly clearly laid out and very helpful, although I do feel it's perhaps a little bit brief considering the great importance of the services that it covers, and perhaps some more detail might be useful, though I understand it is meant more for a general audience than councillors. I'd like to comment on a few things. Firstly, I think it's important to comment on the success of the re-ablement service and on the work with carers, both of which are extremely important areas, and also the improved housing options for older people, which I think is so important, giving people a choice and avoiding too many admissions to residential care. There are some areas of concern, however, under decent neighbourhoods, the information that fifty-four per cent of those consulted feel socially isolated, I think is of great concern, and I do think it's something that we need to do a lot more about in the future. I know it's very difficult to tackle, but there are ways that that can be attacked and improved. And under working city, I'm concerned that only four point five per cent of adults that we care for with learning disabilities are in employment, and that we're managing to get fewer people qualifications that might help them get a job in future, and I hope that's an area that we're going to look at improving. One question I have is on the fast track programme mentioned on page sixty-eight for North East and Cumbria, looking at people with learning disabilities and mental health issues to try and speed up discharge from hospital and prevent hospital admissions. And I wondered if there was any information about how that's going to work in practice? I know it's only been a few weeks since this came to health scrutiny, but I just think there might have been some further work done on this. If not, I'd be grateful if that could be passed on as soon as it is available. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome the report. I think, as councillor Taylor says, it's a well set out and informative report. I wanted to pick up on an issue that wasn't actually mentioned during the report, which is the issue of bed blocking. Figures are out showing that bed blocking is on the increase, and Newcastle's figures for October were six hundred and fifty-eight bed block days equivalent in October, which is the last period we've got figures for. I wanted to ask the cabinet member if there was any, if she had any thoughts on how the council is responding to this, given there is a clear increase in beds blocked, and Newcastle seems to be a lot higher than other parts of the region.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Higgins?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. I would just like to thank the cabinet member for this report, which I think was, you know, very clear, very helpful, and very easy to comprehend. She also very clearly spelled out the excellent efforts that we're making with diminishing resources to support and help the most vulnerable people in the city, which I think refutes the rather disingenuous comments that we heard earlier this evening in relation to the council tax discussion. But perhaps the point I would just like to make and seek the cabinet member's comments about this is that there are many comments from service users about how much they value the relationship they have with their social workers and the role that their social workers carry out. And we know that social workers unfortunately attract criticism for the one or two failings that they might have, so I wonder if she would like this evening to support me in saying how much we appreciate the tremendous work of the social workers in the city, and this reflects on the quality of social workers that we have.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Beecham?
Lord Mayor, I very much welcome this report and congratulate both the former holder and the director and his staff for the immense amount of work that has gone into seeking to maintain the best quality of care for the most, for the greatest number of people in our city. It's forty years since about this time I would have been involved and was involved as chairman of Social Services Committee in the third budget of the then Labour administration, a time when, with the huge support and involvement of Brian Roycroft, I think nationally recognised as perhaps the finest director of social services in the country, we were transforming the provision of social services in this city. We were troubling the number of meals on wheels, we were doubling the number of home helps, we had initiated a welfare rights service, we had done a huge amount to bring social care and social provision, social care provision in this city, well into the twentieth century. And it's saddening that despite all the efforts of officers and indeed other organisations, we mustn't forget our third sector partners in looking at social... we mustn't forget our third sector partners in looking at social services provision in the city, they're now so much under strain. What struck me, looking at the report in particular, was page 67 of the council document, where it lists the needs profile of adults living in Newcastle. If you top those up, it's an extraordinary, by my calculation, 155,000 people. Potentially, of course, they're not all receiving social services, and some of them will perhaps be receiving more than one service. So it's not 150,000 individuals receiving help. But it's a huge proportion of the city's population. It says something about the demographic of the city and our needs that is not adequately reflected in the financial system. But I don't want to make more political points. I just want to make one suggestion, which is that this is a report which deals with social services. Given the relationship between health and social care, which is very much on the agenda nationally and locally, I think it would be helpful if next time around we had a report dealing with both aspects of what needs to be very much a combined and cooperative approach. And I think that would enable perhaps a broader discussion and to look particularly at the key relationships between these two very important pillars of what needs to be a unified health and social care service, so far as we can achieve it, given the resources available.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kilgar, we have a right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've tried to scribble down notes around these questions. I'm not very good at this bit, sorry. I'd like to thank councillor Taylor for her very positive comments. I think one of the questions was about adults with learning disabilities and employment. The calculation methodology for this measure actually changed this year. This is one of the things that changed. Only clients who were assessed or reviewed in a year and had their employment accommodation status recorded were included in the numerator. This means that clients who had not been assessed or reviewed couldn't be counted at that time. I don't know if that answers the question. I will try and get a more detailed answer to you if I can. I understand that one of the questions you were asking about services that were no longer continued, I think it's probably before my time as an elected member, but I understand that it might be something that the previous administration actually cut. But I would have to check that and get back to you. Councillor Stone asked about bed blocking. I'm sorry, I don't have the detail. I can't answer that now, but I will get back to you. I'll make sure you get an answer by email, if that's okay. And again, thank you, Rob. I thanked in my introduction our staff, and I appreciate the positive comments from both yourself and councillor Beecham. Our staff do a fantastic job in very difficult circumstances, even more so given the ongoing transformation of services and the cuts that they have to work around. And I'm pleased that we're able to pass on our thanks to them from the whole council, certainly from the Labour group. To answer one of Jeremy's questions, my understanding is that what's included in the local account is dictated to us. However, I see no reason why we couldn't include or have an additional fact sheet next year to include the health social care overlap that you mentioned. And finally, I'd just like to mention in my summing up, I'd like to highlight some of the facts that are contained in the report. 1,247% increase in deprivation of liberty safeguarding applications in the last year. 6,757 new requests for support for service users, sorry, aged 65 and over in the last year. 2,951 new requests for support from service users in the 18 to 64 age group. 1,991 people using our re-ablement services last year, as councillor Taylor mentioned, an increase of 78 on the previous year. And 2,578 informal carers contacting us for support, an increase of 861 people in one year alone. These figures demonstrate not only the increasing pressures on diminishing budget, but more importantly, just how vital adult social care services are to an increasing number of our most vulnerable residents. I'm pleased to recommend council receive the report, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. If members are happy for councillor Kilgar to get back to them, does council agree to receive this report? Thank you. Item 10, appointment of independent members of the Audit Committee, Standards Committee and the Independent Remuneration Panel. I'm not saying it again. I will call on councillor Bartlett to move the report, seconded by councillor David Wood. Thank you.
Move the report, Lord Mayor, and just to confirm that the references are satisfactory and so we can move the report as stated this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Wood?
Formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Does the council agree to receive the report? Thank you. Petitions monitor. To call upon councillor Bartlett to introduce the report for information only.
Move the report, Lord Mayor, which is highlights the actions that were taken on each of the petitions. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can I just ask, one of the first item on the petition about the Ellic Pool, it says that we would have a response back from councillor Stockdale by the 6th of January. I just wondered if that had happened and if there was anything that we could be updated on? Thank you.
He doesn't appear to be here. He's not in his seat, so we'll ask him to get back to you. Right, thanks very much. Is anyone else able to respond to this? No? Any other speakers? Does council agree to receive this report on the understanding that the question will be answered outside of council? Thank you. Questions by members? We have received four questions marked for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and have also been displayed in the foyer. Item 13, neighbourhoods and regulatory services portfolio report. I call upon councillor Kemp to move the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I introduce the report, I'd like to place on record my appreciation of the dedicated staff teams for the work carried out throughout this year, and also the officers for their help in pulling together this report. Overview and scrutiny made some valuable comments about the report when I presented to them, and these and the responses have been fed into the amended report presented this evening. This is my first portfolio report, and I'm proud of what's been achieved despite the savage government-imposed cuts which have affected the council budget and by implication, frontline services. We have a team of staff who dedicate themselves to servants of this city, and it is only right that they are recognised as the greatest asset we have. This is a broad brief, and there is very much to cover in the report. I trust that it provides a good overview of what has been achieved, and there really has been some excellent successes over the last year. I'm sure you'll all be aware of the well-received television documentary on the Wastemen, again presenting the staff and the city council incredibly well. As a show of recognition of their contribution, the sheriff, my predecessor in this post, held a reception to thank them all personally. Progress is being made on transforming the delivery of street cleansing and environmental services with the introduction of new fleet vehicles and introduction of new technology to make the service more efficient and effective, and thus ultimately improve the environment of the communities we all represent. Through new ways of working, we have mitigated reductions in frontline resources with a new integrated structure responsible for all aspects of cleanliness and routine maintenance across the city. I'm well aware of the colleagues' frustrations with the EnviroCall services, frustrations I myself share, and I am committed to looking to ensure that we have a service that is fit for purpose. But I'm looking to see the results of the implementation of the neighbourhood core standards to identify what services should look like, ensuring that function is a fit and is a right priority. I've suggested to scrutiny that they be involved in this work at the appropriate stage. We've seen a demonstration of excellent partnership working delivering positive outcomes for our citizens, such as the Save Newcastle Dark Nights campaign, which saw 5.5 tonnes of combustible waste removed in just three days, immediately before the 5th of November. This is the equivalent weight of five average adult elephants, apparently. Northumbria Police working with the local authority officers in a coordinated campaign saw a reduction in reported incidents involving fire and fireworks that night, a drop from 66 events to 44 this year. I've had the pleasure of accompanying members of the Trade and Standards Team and Food Hygiene Teams on a number of visits and inspections, and have been amazed to see firsthand the excellent service they provide, from the largely unseen, the day-to-day work such as inspections, to the more investigative and preventative work. There have been many noticeable successes in the last year. Operation Hooker carried out in conjunction with Northumbria Police, immigration officers from the UK Border Force, and also the activity working with sniffer dogs in Operation Beagle, seeing the biggest haul of illicit cigarettes and 40,000 an alcohol ever seized by Trade and Standards Team. This work is a very necessary feat and plays a significant role in our responsibility for the protection of public health. We've extended the selective licensing areas in Highcross and Biker Old Town to address issues of properties in disrepair, empty properties and fly tipping. And these, in conjunction with other interventions such as communal bins, are having a marked impact for the betterment of the areas, with almost 50% of the properties in these areas meeting the standards on first inspection. With regards environmental health and waste management, the enforcement team in environmental protection continue to achieve great results, issuing over 3,000 fixed penalties in 2015. Newcastle has the second highest number of prosecutions in the country for waste crimes and 90% of all prosecutions in all of Tynan Wyr, which is both a positive thing but also a worry about the actual habits that people behave. In fact, since 2011, we have seen a 14% in fly tipping. In 2014, we recycled 41% of household waste, putting us in the top four of the core cities. But we cannot be complacent, and much more needs to be done. And most recently, we were successful in our joint bid with Gateshead for the Clean Bus Technology Fund, securing £400,000. There is much more I could say, but I take it the members have read the full report. I trust that the report adequately illustrates some of the great progress made, but there have of course been many challenges. And I've tried in this report to be honest about those we have faced in the last 12 months and also about the challenges and risks ahead. I'm in early discussions with representatives from neighbouring authorities, and I'm also soon to be in contact with representatives of some of the larger business actors in the city, the universities and hospital trusts, to look to start to draw together a long-term waste strategy for the city. I firmly believe that this needs to be far bigger than the city council. I cannot emphasise enough the pressures we face in the coming years. Budget cuts coupled with unfunded new burdens means we have had to work even harder to protect frontline services and shield our most vulnerable citizens from the government's austerity programme. I am working with the officers and the trade unions with regards to the pressures we face, and we need to look to continue at service modernisation in order to be able to deliver clean, green and safe environments for our citizens. The challenge of air quality in the city is something we must continue to address for the health and wellbeing of our citizens, but also to avoid potential financial penalties. We must ensure that our services are effective and as possible throughout phase two of the civic facilities review, but at the same time doing all that we possibly can to deliver the services we all wish to see for our local residents. I hope this gives the council a flavour of the achievements and challenges of the past year and the idea of the challenges ahead. I'm happy to take questions, Lord Mayor, but please don't ask me what is an average adult elephant.
That's very kind of you, councillor. Councillor Lawrie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Kemp. First of all, I wanted to say a proper thank you to as well, because people may not know, but councillor Kemp was the first member of the executive to actually come out and do a scrutiny meeting in public with real-life people there, asking him questions. And I must say, handled it very well, and it was a really good meeting. We actually had to get thrown out of the building because we overstayed our welcome. But I actually want to ask councillor Kemp about, if he has any thing he can tell me about a response to the letter from Louise Casey, which was about regarding bringing back Britain together as one nation. And it's about the views on tackling extremism and the extremism strategy being proposed by government. In particular, I'd like to know if he has any views on the role of councils and schools in identifying tackling extremism and radicalisation and the use of what could possibly be the new extremism community trigger, which would lead to a discussion on the role of members and community champions to ensure that extremism and the community trigger is implemented effectively by us as members. I just wondered if any members had been consulted on their views and if there was a response going back to Louise Casey before the 22nd of January, which is a closing date. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kane?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Kemp for this report. There is lots and lots of information on it, which is a refreshing change from many of the cabinet member reports councillors had recently. And I hope this sets a trend back to actually providing members with something they can scrutinise. It provides information like the recycling rate, which we have not had published, I don't think, for many years, perhaps not never under the Labour administration. 41% may sound good, but just to put that in proper context, the average recycling rate across the UK is 44.9%. That's in 2014. The Lib Dems took the recycling rate from negligible up to what the average was then. It seems that the administration's been backsliding compared to other authorities since. We need to be very careful about that, because of course, this is not just an environmental issue. The more we cycle, the more income to the council, and the more we miss out on gate fee charges for landfill. So it is an economic issue as well as an environmental one. On the previous page and page 100, I've got a couple of questions. The £100,000 of funding from DEC. These projects change name quite often, so I may have lost track. But is this the district heating programme? And if so, I'm a little bit, while getting funding in is good, I'm a little bit concerned we're getting paralysis by analysis because it seems to be review after review after review. On the same page, it mentions renewable energy PV installations identify new opportunities. The swan song of great public servant John Lee, who did great things for this city, was to bring in lots of PV, including in manors and sunans in Ouzbourn Ward. But we've been unable to find whether the income from those PV panels has been factored into the draft council budget. And it'd be very interesting if councillor Kemp or anybody else could tell us if it is in there and where it is. I'd like to go back then to the long-term waste strategy. Now, it may be a drafting issue, but in the same sentence from page 94, the third one down, it mentions the creation of a waste disposal company and generate energy ourselves. Now, I was just wondering again if councillor Kemp could explain whether that's two things added into the same sentence, or whether he's talking about energy from waste, because obviously that is a delicate subject. And lastly, I could say I've got an orange light flooding. Of course, we'd like to thank all the officers, volunteers, local residents who have helped tackle the flooding recently. I think the council did a wonderful thing. Just before it started, I proposed to officers that we should be integrating sustainable urban drainage technology into the various cycling city schemes. I think what we've seen across the country and to a certain extent over the last few days here in Newcastle, there is probably an urgent need to embed those technologies in every single road scheme we put in. And particularly new developments, councillor Allen pointed out that one of the proposed new developments that was taken off the One Core Strategy is actually today, one huge lake. So either those houses would be underwater or all that water would be in the Ouzbourn, raising the levels even higher. So thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Powers?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a quick comment on councillor Kane's comment about the previous administration. I'm getting to that and putting it in context, rather than being interruptive. I could finish what I'm saying. I'm putting it in context to my question, councillor Kane, if you'd kindly allow me to finish. Sorry, Lord Mayor, I threw myself off track a little bit. I'll move on to what I want to say. First of all, thank councillor Kemp for this report. It is amazing that for such a wide, varied, detailed cabinet position that councillor Kemp holds, that he is able to bring such a source, concise and coherent report to cabinet and council. I'm really welcome for that. In terms of specific questions, I wondered if you could comment on the success that we've seen for the chemulobane rollout, particularly in my own ward, which has been warmly welcomed by residents. And I believe one resident was on IITNIS not so long ago praising the success in seeing a reduction in the waste in the back lanes because of them. I was also hopeful that councillor Kemp maybe wanted to comment, particularly picking up the issues around decent neighbourhoods. That's a news report around the success that this administration's had in trying to tackle those issues, particularly that, given the context of the imposed government cuts that have been forced upon us by the colleagues' party across the chamber and the previous government and will no doubt continue, well, is continuing under the Tory government, the success we've had in working in partnership with local residents and residence groups to take forward... with local residents and residence groups to take forward behavioural change initiatives, and residents doing their part to help keep their neighbourhoods and communities clean, particularly in my own ward, which has seen no less than three residence groups established and win money to be able to drive forward those schemes and the success that's had. But also the councillor Kemp, if you could mention around the work that we do in partnership with other organisations, such as the Student Forum, which we've heard today, the Landlords' Association, and other partners like YIChurn, to try and tackle some of the issues around keeping waste off our streets. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Kemp for this report. Could I just comment on EnviroCall, as I had a very interesting visit to see EnviroCall a few months back, and fascinating to watch how our people are reacting to with residents of Newcastle on the front line there. And although we do run into problems from time to time, I think there's very good work being done down in the basement as well. I'd like to ask some questions in respect to pages 95 through to 98. The first is about licensed taxis, and I'm wondering whether any work has been done yet to consider the impact of the Uber app, I'm not quite sure what app it is, but I understand it is decimating or more the licensed taxis elsewhere in the country and elsewhere in the world, and whether any consideration's been given to if this Uber app takes off the revenue and the costs of that particular part of the licensing system. On alcohol, I am concerned about the numbers of new premises licence applications. We seem to have plenty of alcohol outlets in Newcastle, and yet we are granting new applications all the time, and also this full variation application, which seems to me to be a creeping way of overcoming the restrictions that we have put on in respect to previous applications, and people trying to seeking to get round it, and if there's any way that we can actually grant less of these licences in the future. In respect of the commercial team continuing to work in partnership with the Citizens Advice Bureau to promote consumer rights, I note that I've had a letter from the chief executive of the Citizens Advice Bureau saying that the CAB will be discontinuing its work from October of this year, and I'm wondering how we are going to promote consumer rights in the future if the CAB is not actually there to help us with that. And finally, in respect of environmental protection, congratulations to Newcastle on the high number of prosecutions for waste crimes, but including in waste crimes as far as I'm concerned is prosecutions for dog fowling. There's no mention of that in this report. I wonder how many of these we have, I suspect not very many, and what we can do to enforce something which is a major nuisance for a very large number of people.
Thank you councillor Faulkner. councillor Stone, your name's Down, so you can put your hand down in case it goes into crumb. Thank you.
You have to start worrying when the lord mayor starts turning against you. Lord Mayor and councillor Kemp, I appreciate the report and also the very good discussion we had at scrutiny, and I hope you will resist the attempt of any of your cabinet colleagues to get up in the council chamber and tell you what you should be answering questions on, what you should be saying, because I think you've just had an example of that. So, in relation to what you said in your introduction to the report, and on the subject of elephants, there is actually an elephant in the room, there's an elephant in the report, it's mentioned in passing, but only in passing, and that is what we've come to call NewCo. I did note that in the six-month financial report, building services, commercial services is 1.1 million under budget, it's not receiving the income it expected and what was in the budget, which is why of course there was the setting up or the evaluation of how we could do this better, and it does seem to me as well, as obviously councillor Kane referred to, the great shame that the man who created the report in a set of what seemed very helpful recommendations for his reward has exited the council, and I know nothing of the circumstances, but I think we should be told. But I would like to ask councillor Kemp if he could say a little more about NewCo, if he knows, is there a business plan evolving, is it in place, who will manage NewCo, how will it be dealt with, and to what extent will scrutiny or full council be advised on progress.
Thank you councillor. councillor Down?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. About the time I was reading this fine report, I read an article about an allegation of the council reneging on undertaking with regard to leaseholders in Cedar House in Elzett Ward. I don't know if this is part of your remit, councillor Kemp, but it relates to the fact that in the purchase document for the leaseholders, it said after five years that leaseholders would be able to appoint their own management company. They have been told that this is not now possible, and there is allegation of dishonesty by the council, and I'm just wondering whether you're aware of this. When I read this on the 2nd of November, December rather, it said there was going to be a meeting with the residents, with the leaseholders, the following day, and I'm wondering if he has anything to report on this, it could help us understand the allegations that have been made against the council. Thank you.
councillor Huddard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Kemp for a comprehensive report. One of the things I wanted to ask you about is about EnviroCall, because I get a lot of residents, particularly elderly people, complaining to me about the length of time it takes to get an answer from EnviroCall. And I wondered if you could say something about that and how you see the service developing over the coming years. The other thing is, I wondered if you'd be able to say something about how they've responded recently, given the heavy rain and the pooling etcetera that we've had in the city. And the other thing, you mention in your report about application for buses, for environmental measures for buses, but I read recently that both Sunderland, I think it was Gateshead, were going to get new, much more environmentally friendly buses, and I wondered if you could say why they're going there and not, or are they coming here, are they to be shared between the authorities? Thank you.
councillor Bird?
Hello.
councillor Stone?
I wanted to commend councillor Kemp for a very thorough report, actually. I think it is more illuminating than some of the previous ones we've had on this portfolio. I would particularly like to draw our side's thanks for mentioning this, and Anthony's Tar Works project, which is one where we did actually pull some strings with our colleagues in government at the time, and that is perhaps some Lib Dem government funding which the party opposite will be happy to have received. My questions, I have two questions. The first is regard to, I think it's on the top of page 94, the second paragraph on 94, it says we're looking to procure a winter service provider, and I hope we can procure it in time for the winter, which is obviously well upon us now, but I want to ask the question of whether this involves outsourcing and creation of additional roles here, which the report seems to suggest it's not going to be council staff providing that, and is that outsourcing, and if so, will the current member consider using that same principle for other council services? My second question, I don't know how many of the members have been aware of the popularity of the webcam feed on the Drummond puddle not very far from this building, and I was wondering if councillor Kemp can give me his assurances that he will be out there as soon as possible to ensure that puddle is soon taken away. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a very brief question. On page 105, you mentioned the comments from overview and scrutiny. You have given some information about some of them, but I was just wondering when you'd be reporting back on the other issues that were raised, some of which were questions rather than comments.
Thank you councillor Kemp. You have a right to reply.
Okay. starting off, councillor Lower, thank you for your kind comments with specific response to the issue around extremism and radicalisation. Yes, of course, we all have a duty as elected members and public representatives, but the actual direct response and the kind of coordinated response from the city will come through Safe Newcastle, and whilst I chair it, I don't feel it's appropriate to give a full detailed response until the partnership is met, but we will feedback. Councillor Kane, thank you for your comments. Some of your questions I will attempt to answer, some I will have to come back with very specific and detailed answers. Certainly I agree, as I outlined in my opening introduction remarks about the need to increase recycling, I did say that we don't need to be complacent at 41%, I'm unsure about us going backwards, I think that the rates are a steady increase, but there is much more to be done, and some of this I hope will be connected into a wider waste strategy for the city, something that we've been a little negligent in pursuing, I'm very keen that this year is one of our priorities. As I say, you have very detailed, specific questions. Gareth, can I ask you to send them through and get full responses by email? Thank you. But with regards to the flooding issue, yes, of course, I think officers should be credited and recommended for the hard work that they do in fighting in these horrific circumstances. Councillor Powers, I got one question, and then I'm not entirely sure the rest. Yes, the communal bins, the communal bins element, I think, has been a huge success in Ouzbourn Ward, certainly when I've been out and about with officers and members, meeting the residents, people have generally been incredibly receptive. I think after possibly a somewhat nervous response in the first instance, people have been generally encouraged by it, persuaded by it, and the back lanes have been significantly improved. There's been a general comment, I'm not getting very much feedback to the negative, and there's obviously it's been rolled out into Robbs Ward, and we are looking elsewhere as to where it's appropriate to roll them out. It does bring in efficiencies, but it also brings environmental enhancements. Councillor Ashby, Uber app, if you have a look at your iPhone, that's an app on it. Go and book one, you'll get a free taxi the first time you use it, no plug. I think the team are well aware of the implications of Uber entering the city, but the Licensing Act has changed with regards to taxis, and I think what's happened is the city has taken a forward step, advancing above other authorities, and whilst we have to deal with the application of a commercial operator, we do fairly, and there's a legal process, the issues regarding safety and protection for the customers of the taxis is paramount, and there's full training that's given, and the exercises are very detailed, one-hour training through with any applicant that comes through. As far as the impact on the individual taxi traders, I couldn't possibly comment. With regards Citizens Advice Bureau, I will have to come back with a detailed response, I'm sorry I couldn't give you a reply on that. With dog fowling, we have one dog warden in the city, he is busy, he could be busier, but then again, again, along with behavioural change, neighbourhood, environment, protection, ultimately, I believe there is a responsibility, and I think we need to be far better about educating people in the use and behaviour of their dogs. Councillor Faulkner, NewCo, my understanding is that where we currently sit is, John Lee worked closely with a number of the senior management team in producing the start of a business plan to look at the possibilities of what can and cannot work within it. My understanding, although this is the lead responsibility for the deputy leader, is that work is still underway, that they're working with the treasurer, with the chief executive to continue this work, to get to a point where we understand what might happen as a NewCo and what can happen, and I am sure that the deputy leader will report back fully, and that's as much as information I can give you. Councillor Down, I'm sorry, it's probably outside of my remit, but I've spoken to my colleague on my left, who helpfully has responsibility, and she advises me that it cannot be done, it's basically illegal, but that if you give your full query through, then we can address it in full, before your meeting. Councillor Huddar, EnviroCall, as I said in my introductory remarks, I believe that it really doesn't work, I think there are numerous problems with it. I have undertaken to actually set up a working group as and when appropriate, but as I've said, as we're going to introduce core standards, what I'm keen to do, and I know it's kind of one of my catchphrases, but form and function, what I'd hate to do is introduce a service which then doesn't actually fit the requirements we have, so I would suggest that we look at a review, possibly through scrutiny, of how core standards are delivering, where the gaps are, and what the necessary measures would be, and I would say that would be the building blocks for an EnviroCall service of the future. Councillor Stone, the Tar Works, of course I won't give you credit. With regards winter maintenance, winter maintenance is a significant challenge to the city council and to the neighbourhood's team. In effect, what we currently have is what's been accurately described, I think, as a herd of wildebeest who travel across and pull from different elements of the service to provide the core service as and when necessary. So what's been undertaken for winter 2016 is an investigation into what is a body that's fit for purpose, whether that will be an external provider, which would not have an impact on the actual core staff, it would be something that would be more cost-effective, so it would actually be procuring, potentially with neighbouring authorities, a provider to carry out this service. Councillor Taylor, yes, I am aware that there are a number of issues that are still outstanding from overview and scrutiny, and I undertake to give full written responses to all.
Thank you councillor. Does council agree to receive the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 14, appointments. Are the appointments agreed as set out? Thank you. Item 15, notice of motion, Housing and Planning Bill 2015, I call on councillor Spreether to move the motion, seconded by councillor Allison.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion concerns the Housing and Planning Bill, which passed its third reading in the House of Commons in the early hours of this morning. It is yet to go through the House of Lords, so there's still a possibility for some amendments, and of course, a lot of the detail will be in regulations, and when they're published, we will have to look and see what the implications are for this council and for our residents. Essentially, the bill proposes changes in three areas: social housing, planning policy and management practices in the private rented sector. As a council, we have an interest in all of these areas. However, my focus tonight is on the implications for social housing, as 29% of the housing stock in the city, amounting to nearly 35,000 properties, are in the social housing sector. 26,000 of these are council houses, and we do have plans to build more. As planning and housing go hand in hand, we're also concerned about changes to planning in the bill, so councillor Allison, in seconding this motion, will be speaking about the planning issues. I want to make a start to moving this motion by making some general political points, because this is a highly political piece of Tory legislation. What is crucial about this bill is that the overarching aim is to promote home ownership at the expense of affordable housing to rent. A number of commentators, I'm sure you'll be aware, have said that we are seeing the end of council housing. Also, it amounts to another attack on low-income individuals and families, it neglects their housing needs and undermines their housing security. This bill, in brief, is unjust, it is discriminatory, and it's vicious too. So why do I say that? Well, there are a number of reasons. First, it totally neglects the building of council housing with affordable rents, it has nothing positive to say about that, or the need for it or the value of it. It will reduce the current housing stock by enforced sales disguised as a levy on the higher value of council homes deemed by the government to be saleable, and I'll say more about that in a moment. It extends the right to buy to housing association tenants without guaranteeing replacement homes. It's an attack on council tenants by a mandatory imposition of time-limited tenancies fostering insecurity, and sends out a message that council tenancies are only for the poorest or for those who are deemed by the Tories to lack the aspiration to be a homeowner, irrespective of their ability to afford one. It introduces pay-to-stay for households with an household income over £30,000, which could increase rents for people in this city by £69 a week. Clearly not a work incentive, and perhaps this should be not called pay-to-stay but renamed as earn-to-quit. To add insult to injury, there are several clauses in the bill which seek to rake house resources, financial and land assets, to fund home ownership. The starter homes proposals are of very bad value for public money, as there are subsidies to developers and capital gains for owners who after five years, when they can be sold at market rates, and unfortunately the Labour amendment last night was defeated to try and continue that. And unfortunately, the Labour amendment last night was defeated to try and continue that affordable, that subsidy, as properties were sold on. Furthermore, starter homes will undermine the current one oh six agreements in planning, which do provide some homes at affordable rent, resulting in a further reduction of social housing. So in short, this bill is a list of Tory obsessions and prejudices. In its initial analysis of the impact of the bill, the cabinet received a report, and the officer said in that report, and I quote, "The introduction of the Housing and Planning Bill has brought some of the most draconian policies aimed at undermining the current and future supply and security of social housing." So let me first consider supply. We will have enforced sales of higher value council housing. The council will have little control of this. Local authorities will make a fixed payment to the treasury each year based on the government estimate for the income on properties they think are likely to become vacant and should be sold. Councils will have to pay this levy regardless of how many homes are actually vacant and available for sale. The result will be a reduction in the stock of affordable homes for rent. Oh, and by the way, these capital receipts from these assumed sales will be used to compensate housing associations for the extension of the right to buy. Even so, housing associations express doubts that the compensation will not be sufficient for replacing sold properties, so their stock too of affordable housing for rent will shrink. The proceeds of the levy will also be used for setting up a brownfield sites development fund as part of delivering starter homes by private developments. An initial estimate by this council is that twenty percent of vacant properties will be subject to this levy. In practice, there will be little choice than to sell these properties. Sell these properties. This policy is likely to increase rent arrears and the cost. Sorry. Sorry. Right. So let's be clear, there will be money going out from the council by government decree because of the enforced sales policy or the levy, and less coming in from fewer rents from a declining housing stock, which will add to the financial problems that we now face with the mandatory annual rent reduction. This will undermine the maintenance of decent housing standards and restrict our capacity for new build. There's quite a lot that I could say in this bill, but I'm going to just talk briefly about the end of secure tenancies. Three years ago, this council made a pledge to council tenants.
Councillor, you have a red light, could I ask you to wind up?
Okay. Three years ago, the council made a pledge to council tenants to defend social housing as a choice for single people and families. They set out our opposition to this. Just finish this briefly, lord mayor. There were few dissenters at the time, but there were Lib Dems who were amongst them. We do not share that view, and their views of many others, that it's not right for people to be in fear of losing their home if their circumstances were improved and changed. We felt then, as we do now, that ending lifetime tenancies could lead to a work disincentive. I hope the Lib Dems in the opposition here tonight have come round to our view that this is not right, it's not fair, and it is mean spirited. Thank you, lord mayor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Allison, for a second.
Get me my microphone on. Lord mayor, I mean, I think councillor Sprether has picked up a lot of the issues as far as housing's concerned. And, I mean, you're right at the end, the Lib Dems a few years ago did agree with the government that you shouldn't have a lifetime secure tenancy. I'm sorry, I disagree with that completely. A tenancy, a council tenancy is somebody's home, and if it's, if it's a lifetime, as long as the decent people who look after their house and pay their rent, why shouldn't they live there for the rest of their life? I mean, it's absolutely shocking. I mean, this is just another draconian, as Jen said, attack on, on local authorities to me. This council, along with others, has spent months, years building up a local development plan, you know, along with the fairer housing unit, so all the processes have gone through, and included within that is a percentage, fifteen percent, of affordable homes. And there's two definitions of affordable homes. There's a Tory definition of an affordable home, which is up to two hundred and fifty thousand pounds outside of London, with a twenty percent discount. Our definition of an affordable home, which is an affordable home, which, which recognises the price that people can afford in an area. And we have a clause within the section one oh six agreement, that if somebody buys one of the affordable home in the estates that we are now successfully building, then they can't sell it on to the profit. When it's sold on, it's sold on, it is still discounted price. So there's a complete difference to the government that's come from this Tory party. I mean, the, the, the planning committee at the moment, we rigorously scrutinise every planning application that comes in for any development, and we insist, and we make sure, and we scrutinise it, you know, really, really hard, to make sure that the fifteen percent's fair. And in some cases, in the city in the past few months, we've actually brought developments in with a hell of a lot more than fifteen percent affordable, and a big percentage, as councillor Sprether said, are affordable homes to rent, where there's a big, big demand for it. The, the demand to buy is diminishing year by year, and this is not going to solve that situation whatsoever. I mean, councillor Sprether mentioned the brownfield register, and we, we, as I said earlier, have targeted brownfield sites well before any greenfield sites have come in, green, greenfields have come in, then our, our councils try to build houses on. We are targeting brownfield sites all the time, and been very, very successful with the fairer housing unit, working with Y H N and other constructors. It's landowners who sit on brownfield sites, not the councils. It's the landowners who sit on them, waiting for the right opportunity to come in and try and make a quick buck. That's what it's all about, and that's all this is going to do. This allows them, once we get the register up, to have permission in principle to build, they can then build up to ten houses, and what's to say they can't come back for another ten, another ten, without any community infrastructure levy going in, without any section one oh six. They can just do what they like, they don't have to put the roads in, they don't have to put the schools in, they don't have to put anything in at all, they can just get away and do what they like, it's absolutely shocking. The other one that they're slipping through, quite, quite cutely, up till mid this year, there's actually an act already in there which allows permitted development, where you can actually pull an office block down, or change an office block into houses. It hasn't been very successful, and some members of committee may, may remember going out to see Warrick House in Sandyford a couple of months, well, a few months back now, where there was a plan, it converted into houses, it was absolutely shocking. You were actually going to have people living in a dungeon, and we quite rightly got it stopped. Now, in the future, we can't stop that from happening, because they're sneaking this through again, and they'll actually be able to go in, knock the block of offices down, and build new houses again, without any planning permission, with no community levy, with no section one oh six, so they can just dump a lump of houses in the middle of another estate somewhere, and the effect on other residents will not be taken account of whatsoever. They don't have to consult, they don't have to do nothing. It's absolutely deplorable what they're trying to do here. Just quickly touching back on some of the, the housing issues, I mean, one of my bugbears in my life, in the last, most of my life, has been private landlords, I have to say, and this does nothing to address them. It makes comments about, you know, tightening up on, on private landlords, but this legislation is so weak, it's unbelievable. The private landlords in parts where I live are the scourge of society that allow communities to, to just be shot to hell, because they just don't care about who they put in them, and how these tenants can wreck, wreck communities. It's absolutely disgraceful. And as I said earlier, one of the other things that we try to do when we are building at the moment, is you're tenancy blind when you go into an estate, you can actually walk into a new development, and you cannot tell which ones for rent, which ones for sale, which ones affordable, because they're all designed to the same standard. This comes in, all that will be wrecked. It's an absolute travesty that this has been pushed through. Now, I understand some authorities up and down the country haven't got the local development planning yet, we have, we've been proactive with it, and to try and make changes to it now, we've successfully done that, in my opinion, is absolutely wrong, and we need to, and as Jen said, you know, it's gone through, the act's gone through, it's going to the House of Lords, there's still time, we need to try and scupper this act as fast as we can.
Thank you councillor. councillor Huddard.
Thank you, lord mayor, for the opportunity to speak on this motion, and thank you to councillor Sprether for raising the issue. The Housing and Planning Bill certainly will make an impact on our current housing policies, and it does contain some very contentious issues, as well as one or two welcome ones. It should be noted that the voluntary sector, local authorities and interest groups have been lobbying for ages about the need for action to increase both the number and variety of homes available. The shortage of homes is a problem across the UK, and in parts of the country like London and the South East, it's regarded as a crisis, with many voices calling for over two hundred thousand per annum to be built. In turn, the shortages have caused massive hikes in the price of housing in some locations, making purchase completely out of the reach of ordinary people. The bill, we understand, is an attempt to address the shortages, boost supply, and build a million homes by twenty twenty, but will do so by following a pattern of previous flawed right wing thinking. If I can mention some of the welcome matters, plans to enable councils to tackle rogue landlords and letting agents via databases and blacklisting. But there are further measures, such as national registers and a regulated system for rent controls, and strengthening tenants' rights, which could also have been introduced. Plans to support small builders by allocating land to build two hundred thousand starter homes, fine, but they will also be for purchase and not rent, and may again exclude many low waged people. And the plans to replace right to buy housing associations' properties on a one for one basis, but the plans to extend this have been contentious, and consequently watered down following wholesale objections. And there's still the matter of how the replacement housing will be funded, and thousands of local authorities might not have the high value properties to underwrite this kind of exercise. However, one of the areas of greatest need is that of rented social housing. Post-war, we saw millions of homes built, and about thirty years ago, it could be said that a third of us were owner occupiers, a third private renters, and a third social renters. Now, as a result of legislation and the financial crisis, fifty percent of us are owner occupiers, and about twenty-five percent in private and social housing, renting. And the biggest growth area is in the private rented sector, and I would share Jordi Allison's concerns about that. Mrs Thatcher tried to socially engineer the country into becoming a property owning, owning democracy, which had its attractions for many people. However, the lack of new building and the replacement of core social housing, including selling it off and not reinvesting the money.
Could you wind up councillor, you have a red light?
Yes, I would include the last Labour government in that, has contributed to the current problematic situation. The Conservatives proposed removing lifetime tenancies in two thousand and ten, and they were not supported by the Lib Dems at the time, and the legislation gave us a flexible, gave us some flexible alternatives, which some local authorities took up. We didn't do that here. However, what we've got now is a situation.
Thank you councillor, could I ask you to sit down now please?
We have a situation where at least the disabled and long term handicap people will, will not be subjected to this, and the current tenants can maintain a lifetime, and it will happen for the new people, whether we agree with it or not. And I would say to the Labour Party, if you are the national opposition, let's see some action from you opposing this, and more policies, more definite policies coming forward about this.
Thank you councillor. councillor Beecham.
I think this is an issue which clearly unites members across the chamber, and that will be the same, I have to say, in the House of Lords, where John Shipley and I will be playing some part when the Housing and Planning Bill reaches its. I'd say, prefacing my remarks, I was very disappointed frankly with the response of the social housing sector, who I think were taken in by the government, who have had great difficulty in getting right to buy for housing social and properties through the House of Commons, given their small majority and the concern of some of their own members. And I met with, together with members of Labour's housing and planning team, with David Orr and some of the National Housing Federation people, and frankly, I, I think they made a gross mistake in going along with the right to buy for social housing that will impact on their capacity to borrow and invest in their housing stock, and I don't know whether we can correct that in the House of Lords, probably not, certainly it's a matter of great concern, as is the position of the private rented sector. Nothing is said in, in this bill about what has happened to private sector rents, which have shot up, no control there, as opposed to the cuts in social and council housing rents. And the irony is that affordable rents are deemed to be eighty percent for council and social housing, are deemed to be eighty percent of the artificially inflated private sector levels. Combined with the lack of security, that is frankly little short of disgraceful. The decision by the government to cut council and social housing rents sounds like a good thing to tenants. In fact, the principal beneficiaries are the government because of the massive savings they will make in housing benefit. And the consequence is that there will be significantly less money to invest in maintaining the existing stock. In Newcastle, I believe the figure is five hundred and thirty-nine million pounds over the years that would otherwise have gone in to improving and maintaining the housing stock. And it also has an impact, of course, on the willingness of housing associations and others to get into the building of properties. In my own ward, there are two small schemes which would have attracted a good deal of interest, and are now very marginal in terms of whether they're likely to go ahead, given the failure to recognise the need for reasonable rent increases in order to cover that cost of improving, and also, of course, the degree to which housing associations are exposed to risk as a result of right to buy. It is quite deplorable. The final point I want to make is the issue of security of tenure. This was a last minute addition to the bill, as I understand it. It's appalling, it of course has no relationship to what goes on in the private sector where there's no security at all. And it ignores the fact that people's homes aren't just our homes, but that in, being in an area, they're part of a community. And the ties that link people are going to be severed arbitrarily, potentially, as people are forced to move out. The bedroom tax was bad enough, this is, if anything, even worse in terms of its potential impact on the community. And I hope that, together with crossbenchers in the House of Lords, you may be able to persuade the government to make some changes in what is a pretty appalling piece of legislation.
Thank you councillor. councillor Stone.
Thank you, lord mayor. There's much in disquiet in the housing sector about this bill, and much in the bill which gives grounds for concern. I may be one of the few members who've read the bill in full, although I, I discovered that last night, there's another fifty pages have been tacked on the last minute by the government. But I do have a suspicion that the motion is based, is not so much based on the bill, but on the reports of the bill, in a recent cabinet report, which, to be fair, misses out a number of aspects and gave a, written in a way which gave a negative view of some other parts. There are aspects of the bill which should be opposed, and rightly so, but I think it's worth mentioning briefly some of the, the parts which are worthy of support and not mentioned in the motion. The side of the chamber believes that housing policy needs to include greater provision and increased delivery of both social rented and affordable to buy housing. Local and national policy should ensure sustainable funding for and increased supply of both affordable ownership and affordable rented homes, and delivery should be on a mixed economy basis, which includes private sector house builders, RSLs, local authorities, self-build, cooperative, and other forms of provision. Local plans and site development briefs should uphold established principles of place-making and sustainable communities, including mixed tenure provision, including ensuring affordable housing provision is integral, i.e. pepper potted rather than separate or segregated. And I'm not opposed to efforts to increase provision of starter homes and other measures to help first time buyers. There is a clear and growing need to tackle the shortfall in new housing completions, but it's clear to me we need greater delivery of both social rented and starter homes. There are some things in the bill but not in the motion which I'm able to support. Proposals to tackle rogue landlords and letting agents are welcome. Measures to improve the supply of self-building housing plots and sites are very welcome, we should be doing more of this. Proposals to introduce a brownfield register of sites suitable for housing developments will increase supply and reduce the local plans' reliance on greenfield development and Newcastle's local plan, as the biggest encouragement of the green belt of any council in the country. We think this should be a, a better balance with brownfields, and that should be an important part of the planning process. The motion doesn't mention the requirement for local authorities to be transparent about the financial benefits it receives from planning applications, that's a good thing which we should be in support of. The bill includes provision for increased powers for neighbourhood forums and neighbourhood planning, again, this is a good thing. The motion is critical of the provision of the Secretary of State to override local plans where they do not deliver sufficient affordable housing. I'm aware of many councils, including Conservative control in the South, that are not providing enough affordable homes. I would not object to these councils being obliged to take more. On P D R, we oppose changes that would override concerns about impact on residential amenity of the suitable sites, but we are broadly supportive of changes which would label residential use of, e.g., office spaces above shops. I have concerns about the bill's deletion of the requirement to provide for gypsy and traveller communities. Again, it's not unknown for some councils to fail to provide adequately for this marginalised group. I don't think it's a significant issue in Newcastle, but I hope that lobbying on the bill will address this point. The bill will inhibit funding for and supply of RSL and council homes, and this needs to be looked at again. But my other concern, which is not referred anywhere in the amendment, in, in the motion, relates to the provision of funding for brownfield sites. The bill includes provision of ten million pounds nationally for this, which is far, far short of what is required nationally. And I call upon the government, and closer to home I call upon NICA and this council, to urgently investigate and bring forward plans for appropriate levels of brownfield funding to help remediation and reuse more sites to deliver more homes. So let's lobby for changes to the legislation in Parliament with secure improvements, which sake of the best interest. sake of the best interests of the city and its residents. Let's support the good, amend the indifferent and oppose the worst parts of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ahad?
Thank you Lord Mayor. I wasn't going to speak on this motion, but I think it's important and if I get emotional, please forgive me. Back in 1989, my dad had a father and we had a family business and we went to Bangladesh in 1989 for, it was meant to be for a month, but I got poorly, I had jaundice and because I was getting treatment in Bangladesh, we eventually stayed for 13 months. During that time, we had our own business, my father had his own business and we had our own house as well. And because my father couldn't pay the mortgage, the mortgage tripled. So when we came back in 1991, we had to pay a lot of mortgage. My dad had a stroke in 1995. We were still living at that house, paying a very high mortgage. Eventually, we got evicted and we were practically on the streets for a couple of years. And we were, from one house to another, we were moving houses to houses. We were homeless with five children and my dad obviously being poorly, which has had a stroke. We did not have any opportunities at that time and who came to our rescue was council house. We were eventually put into a council house in Benwell and I, we lived there and my parents still live there, I just moved about a year ago. And the thing which we got from the council house, which I, we, because I had no opportunities, my family did not have any opportunities. We had to work when I was 15, 16, full time, just to kill my father's debts. But the opportunity we got at a council house, I can never forget. Since then, obviously, I've been allowed to become a city councillor. My sisters have been to universities because they were allowed to work, they were allowed to go to university. And what the government are planning with getting rid of lifetime tenancies is absolutely disgraceful. It is divisive and it's breaking communities, it's breaking people. You know, the communities we live at, you know, living in Benwell now in a council house, we, for two years, we went in the community, we were moving houses to houses. But for the last 15, 16 years, we have allowed to be live in the community, to be part of a community. And what the Tories are doing is breaking communities. Actually, in other words, it's actually ethnic cleansing and it's absolutely disgraceful. And that's why I support this motion.
Thank you for your contribution councillor. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you Lord Mayor. We believe that parts of this bill are pernicious and damaging and that it's important that we work together to oppose it. As has been said by my colleagues, there are a few welcome measures such as dealing with rogue landlords, but overall, the bill's main aim is to destroy social housing in this country, simply because the Tories don't believe in social renting. They seem to be obsessed with the idea of home ownership, seeming to believe that if you own your own house, all your other problems will somehow go away. Of course, this totally ignores the fact that even with their starter homes, there will be huge numbers of people who simply will not be able to afford a house. Other countries accept that many people prefer to rent and don't want the responsibility of home ownership. So why should those people be forced into the dubious private sector that we've heard about from councillor Allen and Allison and others? There are other problems about this bill. Firstly, there's no guarantee that if a house is sold, the replacement will be built even in the same city. We could have a house sold in Newcastle and rebuilt in Leeds. It really doesn't help anybody. The bill goes totally against the devolution agenda because what can be more top-down than this bill when otherwise the Tories claim to be those who want to pass down their power to more local areas? And the pay to stay aspects of it will actually force some people to reduce their work. There are ideas that perhaps two people in a household working, one of them might have to go part-time to avoid the fact that if they stay full-time, the extra rent that they have to pay would actually outweigh any benefit from their increased hours. And if you're actually putting in a deterrent to work, that really seems crazy. So I think this bill is Tory dogma at its worst. It must be opposed and I hope that we can work together to do so.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ashby please.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'd like to add my voice to those condemning this bill, which is showing what unrestrained the Tories will do and would have done five years ago. They, as has been said, they really don't believe in social housing sector at all. They want people in owner occupation. As my leader, Tim Farron, said, the flaws in this bill are clear and the unintended consequences extensive. Britain needs a radical, ambitious, compassionate housing policy that addresses the needs of supply and affordability and strengthens not dismantled communities, words with which I agree. What I would like to say however, briefly, is in support of the private rented sector, which is the third leg of housing supply. We only ever hear about rogue landlords and poor conditions and all the rest of it. What we never hear about is that the private rented sector is often people putting their own money into the provision of housing for rent. And without the availability of such private rented accommodation, there would be a significant reduction in mobility within this country. People will be unable to move around from one part to the other because they would not be able to get a council house and they could not necessarily afford to buy a home elsewhere. And amongst the unintended consequences, it is being reported that some 200,000 people will leave, the 200,000 properties will be sold from the private rented sector, presumably into owner occupation and significantly therefore reducing the supply of those. While rogue landlords, there are certainly rogue landlords, I can, it seems to me evident that rogue landlords do not take much notice of rules and regulations. There are plenty of respectable private landlords who do take notice of it and it makes their life considerably more difficult. And the, coupled with the other measures that the Tories are taking, it is going to make the provision of this private rented accommodation that much less possible and will go down, it means that it will go down to the large corporations and rogue landlords as the only suppliers rather than the broad spectrum that we currently have.
Thank you councillor. Can I ask councillor Strether to respond please?
Thank you Lord Mayor. There's so much that can be said about this despicable bill and a lot of it has been said in this chamber tonight and I want to thank everybody who's made a contribution because I think you've all made some really excellent points. I'm particularly pleased that the issue about private, the private sector was picked up. It's a small part of the bill, but really the criticism is what it omits. It doesn't tackle some of the real problems that tenants and potential tenants face in the private sector. And I do take on board councillor Ashby's point, there are decent private landlords and this council works with them and will continue to work with them, but there are many who are not actually acting in the best interests of tenants. And why it's important, of course, is that many of these other provisions in the bill, the pay to stay, the short-term tenancies, will mean that more people will go into the private sector because they can't sustain a tenancy in a council, in a public tenancy. So we do need to be concerned increasingly with what's happening in that sector too. And so I say, I thank you all those members that have addressed that issue. I think the point that Jeremy and others made about destabilising communities is a really important one. We are, what we, we are going to end up with a diminishing social housing sector that's probably going to be confined just for the poorest of our population. We don't want that, we want mixed communities. And although in a small way, the 106 regulations allow us to have some mixed developments, that is going to be undermined now by the starter homes. So there's a real concern about that. There's a lot of hype about starter, starter homes, but there has, the point has been made, they will undermine mixed developments and of course, for many people, it's not going to be within their grasp because they're not going to be able to afford to get the mortgage, to get one in the first place. So, and I really want to thank too councillor Ahad for his very moving contribution where he's just made it so clear from a human perspective of what a council house means to people when they're in need and how it can put people on their feet to get on with their lives. And that is what we worry about. So finally, I just want to say that I think we all agree that this is a thoroughly bad bill. We're going to have to work with it, but there will be a lot in regulations and we'll have to, by monitoring it, we'll have to assess what the implications are and do our best to circumvent the worst aspects. So I urge the council to support the recommendations this bill, that we continue to monitor this and make representations as it continues its passage through Parliament. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 16.
Of the Open University, we'll withdraw from the meeting.
Thank you councillor.
Lord Mayor, can I declare an interest in this through my elections with the WEA? Some sort of...
Thank you. Are there any other?
Lord Mayor, I'd like to declare my interest to graduate to the Open University.
Any more? Can anybody trump this? Yes. Item 16, notice of motion, Open University, Regional Centre. I understand that this motion has been, has cross-party support and will, and I will call on councillor Schofield to move the motion, seconded by councillor Ashby.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'll be very quick and I can feel the tension rising. I'm really pleased to be speaking against the closure of the OU regional offices nationally and particularly locally and I'm also very glad that this motion has cross-party support. A civilised society is enlightened with standards of social equality and justice, including access to knowledge for all. Its opposite is barbarism, however it's dressed up, and by God, it's dressed up in some very fancy clothes sometimes. A national education system for children, young people and adults is integral to what we mean by civilised. The OU is part of this social ideal within the AU system, based on values and standards of free thinking, liberty, truth and access to knowledge. The adult education provision we have become accustomed to for many, many years came out of huge, massive working class struggles, which make extremely interesting reading and particularly now. Those struggles were supported by the trade unions and also individual visionaries. In the case of the OU, people like Michael Young was very, very important. Since its incorporation by Royal Charter in 1969, the OU has taught over 2 million students worldwide and it has served as a model for distance learning across the world. Its international reputation is built on outstanding teaching and excellence in research and the provision of wonderful, and those of us who've used them in our own teaching know how wonderful they are, excellent learning materials. And the point is that the OU offer is from literacy right the way through to higher education in all its forms. Its open admission policy and its work-based learning programme offer, while at the same time giving high standards of scholarship, has made educational opportunities available to people who were excluded in the past. And it has been particularly significant for women in low-paid jobs or at home as carers. It's also been very significant for people with disabilities who found it very difficult to get to traditional universities. The provision of the work-based learning programmes through partnerships with the trade union movement and employers, as well as individual study, have been made available to many within the council, elected members. And the council and those people, and those people have much to be grateful for. And many of them have written movingly about their experience. They say they benefited from the flexibility and the one-to-one access to tutors and specialist learning. And in my own field, this has been particularly true in health and social care and community practices. I've always been very proud that it was a Labour Prime Minister, Harold Wilson, who in the 1960s, building on the work of Michael Young and others, decided to take action to address the continuing exclusion from higher education of people on lower incomes or within limiting situation and disabilities. I really enjoy too, being able to celebrate the work of Jenny Lee, who as his Minister of Arts pushed through the project against widespread hostility and conservative pressure to stop it, so that it became a Labour manifesto commitment in the election of 1966. It's also been my good luck and tremendous privilege to have been part, and I'm hoping Lindsay's up there from the Open University, been part of the British to Learning Project, which was a local partnership, which is seen as very pioneering in terms of work-based learning, but also that it offered a skills escalator through from literacy right the way through. And one of the important aspects of it was the work with the trade union movement and in this case particularly Unison, but also the other unions. The proposed closures anticipate the government review of FE and AE, intended very deliberately to cut the number of providers and range of learning centres. The arguments of the OU VC, in line with Tory plans, that the proposed rationalisation of the OU will offer more exciting and innovative provision through digital technology for students is unconvincing. I wish I had more time to speak about that. Make no mistake about it, we are again in the middle of an ideological struggle in which attacking the working class life chances through education. The Tory barbarians in government are working hard to break up the shared ground of humanity and hope on which our national education system, which includes adult education, has been built. Tory ministers talk of a civilised society, but what this means for them is to sacrifice the security, safety and hopes of huge numbers of working people and those out of work in their own interests.
You have a red light councillor, could you wind up please?
Just two minutes, you gave it to them. So their focus is on narrow skills, limited onsite, low-level training. We need to work together to defend our education system and AE within it and support the OU mission for inclusive, flexible service education, based on the needs of students within the localities by trusted and respected staff. I ask council to support this motion and to support the OU in every effort it is making to keep the office open. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ashby to second.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to second this motion, a good example of cooperation between the Labour and Liberal Democrat groups. As councillor Schofield mentioned, four times Labour Prime Minister Harold Wilson described the creation of the Open University in 1969 as the greatest achievement of his premiership. Today, it has a physical support base for the region in Gateshead, including the arts and humanities faculty. The plan is to sell this off and this will have a huge impact. Regions support a wide range of students as each faculty has dedicated regional staff. Students allocated by region and to tutors within the region, something surveys say they want, but this will change this year. Once the regions are dismantled altogether, students will be allocated to tutors by postcode rather than best fit of academic staff to serve their needs. Already, regions no longer have their own directors. Most future support will be based in Milton Keynes, London, Nottingham and Manchester by the OU's new online services, a spin-off company has been created. The personal connections and regional identity will be eroded or lost, which will most likely further reduce student numbers. Teaching staff were told otherwise at first, but now here, there could be a loss of 40% of the work from the North Region tutors. Probable redundancies would include those with the most experience of working online, supposedly key in the reorganisation. European students currently tutored from the North Region bring good links to the OU and the UK, with people studying in Europe, including visiting the North East for short and the UK, with people studying in Europe, including visiting the North East for short breaks and establishing professional connections which are of value to us in the long term. The OU says it will only save 4.7 million by its latest reorganisation, and there's been massive opposition from students and staff who we can safely say know as much as, if not more, about it than the apparatchiks in and around London. The new fee system hasn't helped, contributing to a drop of twenty-five per cent of student numbers, but this is a top-down management decision by the OU, not government. The Open University seems truly capable of risking undoing itself and Harold Wilson's legacy without any help from Tory reactionaries. I urge all councillors to support the motion.
We have no indication, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hadn't intended to speak, but just as we were discussing this issue, something came to mind. I do have a degree from the Open University, and I remember being at one summer school and talking to the staff there, and they said how they'd had a visit from Keith Joseph, well-known Tory. And they were a bit taken aback when he was being shown round the site, and he said, "But where do your students live?" And I think that just shows that they really, Tories have got no idea about the Open University, how it works, and still, all these years later, they haven't. So I'm just amazed at what they want to do. So I just wanted to make that small contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Could I ask councillor Schofield to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I find the intervention from the other side very helpful, but I don't think they actually challenge in any way the motion, which is to actually support the university against closures of the regional offices. And I'd just like to end on one note, actually. We have a Tory government which went to one university, Oxford University, and the joke in Oxford is that it provides the best vocational education because it teaches people to write everything they don't know on one side of A4, but to write it very well indeed. And I think that's what we're seeing, whereas I think when we look at what happened within the Open University and the other adult education provision, and I would include the WEA very much in this too, we find people who are deeply thoughtful, they have life experience, and they bring that to their region and the economy. So I ask you to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item seventeen, notice of motion, local government cuts. I call upon councillor Forbes to move the motion, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The week before Christmas is normally a week where people are able to relax a bit, enjoy the end-of-the-year festivities and spend some time with their friends and family. That is, unless you are a local government finance director or a leader of a council, in which case you're on nervous tenterhooks, because this is the time of the year when the local government finance settlement is released. And ours was published this year on the seventeenth of December, and as we expected, it contains further bad news for Newcastle. This year's settlement, or rather the one announced on the seventeenth of December, confirms that our worst-case scenario is being realised, not only being realised, but it looks as though, we're still doing the detail of the number crunching because it's very complex, but it looks as though we face cuts of thirty-two million pounds next year, not thirty million as we'd initially predicted. Now, usually, our predictions around cuts have been accurate over the lifetime of the last parliament. And I remember making speeches in this council chamber where people didn't really believe the scale of the cuts that I was predicting. And yet, each year, those predictions have come true, because each year of the coalition government, year on year, local government was subject to deeper cuts than any other part of public expenditure. And those cuts have had a very profound impact on what we've been able to do in this city. We've debated them at length, we've agonised over them, and we've sought to do everything we can to mitigate against them. It was therefore a real surprise to find at the back end of last year, the Prime Minister writing to the leader of Oxfordshire County Council complaining about the impact of government cuts to local services. It was as if the Prime Minister had absolutely no understanding at all of the impact of government cuts to local government in terms of frontline services. It shows an astonishingly out-of-touch Prime Minister, an astonishingly out-of-touch government, one which has absolutely no regard for the impact of its actions. If only the Prime Minister had read the letter that I wrote to him back in 2012, pointing out the devastating impact of the cuts that we would face in Newcastle, pointing out the way in which they would simply cuss-shunt to other parts of the public sector, pointing out how counterproductive they would be in trying to help to build better public services. Sadly, all my warnings went unheard. And sadly too, those cuts could have been prevented, or at least not been as deep, if the coalition partner in that coalition government, the Liberal Democrats, had actually stood up more to the coalition Tories and said, "No, we will not put up with these deeply disproportionate cuts." Because it wasn't just the disproportionality of local government cuts overall that was damaging, it was the deeply unfair way that they were imposed upon local government around the country. Newcastle facing cuts up to ten times greater than other councils, and the Lib Dems simply sat back and allowed that to happen, despite us in this council chamber warning year on year on year. They've been absolutely complicit in the cuts to date, and the cuts that the Tories are now pursuing for local government simply build on the last five years' worth of legacy of the coalition. So we must continue to campaign against these cuts to local government. We must continue to highlight their impact in our city. We must continue, of course, to find ways to mitigate them, and that is what most of us in the cabinet team spend virtually every waking moment trying to do, to find different ways of doing things, more effective ways of doing things, ways in which we can engage partners and community members in doing things. It's getting harder and harder, because we've faced cuts deeper than many other people, therefore we are at the sharp end of what austerity looks like in practice. So we must continue to explain to our communities in the city why we are having to take these difficult and, in my view, damaging decisions around our public services. We must continue to work with other local authorities in the context of the Local Government Association to continue to raise these issues with national government. And we must continue to campaign against these cuts at a national level, because sadly, the warnings that I and many other council leaders have made over the years have gone heeded. Sadly, it takes a bit of blue-on-blue action, like we saw in Oxfordshire, with a Conservative council leader against a Conservative Prime Minister, to start making them a national story. And I just wish that people had heard our warnings sooner and heeded our warnings earlier, because otherwise the damage that is being done to our public services might have been alleviated or avoided.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy to second.
Second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Just me and councillor Faulkner having a scrap of air. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can I just say, I want to thank councillor Forbes for presenting the motion. I mean, we do it on an annual basis practically, this issue about the funding. And can I remind him that although you may think that the Lib Dems in government sat back, local Lib Dems as a political group spent a lot of time campaigning and speaking and writing, trying to get people to listen to the arguments that were led by the Labour group opposite about the funding and the unfair funding cuts that we were suffering in Newcastle. I think, I have to say quite honestly, all of which fell on deaf ears, yes. No one wanted to hear it. And while I recognise the scale of the cuts that have been imposed on us by the Tory government, I think what we need to do now is, as a city, we know it's going to be tough, it's going to get tougher, but I think we need to look at innovative ideas and joint services, regional collaboration, and it's going to get more critical as we go forward. We can't afford to stagnate. We can cry wolf as long as we want to the government, they think it's a joke that we seemingly can just keep pulling money out of the back pocket or out of the magic box, which I wish they would give us the key to. However, I think that what we need to do as a city is what we've always done, that's look forward and not back. There are going to be tough times ahead, and I think that I honestly don't envy councillor Forbes as leader and acknowledge the problems that he faces. I think it's getting tougher by the day, it's going to get tougher, but I think things like talking about the development of new co and style business strategy for the city is what we need. I think we need to be talking more about how we're going to work with combined authority and how we're going to maintain services, not only in the city but also across the region. I want us to be the positive voice, not the disheartened voice. We can be disheartened, but we've also got to show that positive face, because this city has always fought and always come through, and I think we need to do it again. But I do think that councillor Forbes is perfectly right about the funding. We should be getting a fair share, there should be cuts, the cuts cannot keep going on, we're going to end up where we're probably sitting with two pence per person per year and wondering what we're going to do with it. I really think the government needs to turn around and listen to us, and I don't know how we do that, but the more that we put forward a combined and united front against this, the better. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So you'll gather from our group leaders' comments that we intend to support the recommendations of this report, because to do so is entirely consistent, as she's said, with the line that we've taken over the past five years. And we've done it in this chamber, we've done it publicly in the media, we've done it, and we've been helped by the finance staff here with the figures, we've done it in making representations of our own. Sadly, it's naive to think that partners, particularly junior partners in the coalition, can have a disproportionate influence when a course is set. But I would just say that whilst, you know, you're all in your comfort zones attacking the Liberal Democrats in coalition, you might at least give us credit for our stance on this and for our honesty in criticising part of this aspect of coalition policy. And before you think I'm going soft, I just want to contrast that with the absolute unwillingness of your party ever to accept any responsibility for the financial crisis and the need for deficit reduction. Well, if you're tired of our message, then we're rather tired of yours. You know, get real, be a bit honest for a change, it would be very refreshing. Not to mention your rank refusal before the general election to set out any policy for local government whatsoever, none at all. Though Ed Balls, do you remember him, wrote before the election to all your shadow spending department ministers to say, "If we win, there are going to be huge reductions, huge cuts in every area, so be prepared for it." But no, no, forget that, that's irrelevant, isn't it? However, what it does mean is that we still haven't got the slightest idea of what Labour Party policy is on local government funding, if there is one. And maybe you could all take time off your internal civil war, which is really pathetic if it wasn't a joke, to let us know what it is, because it is important. Maybe councillor Forbes can tell us tonight, maybe he's got some influence, although I think he did back the wrong horse in the leadership election. Now, I just want to comment specifically on the paper, the motion that he's brought forward, because I do think it's a lost opportunity. You know, you could have taken the opportunity tonight to tell us about the detail of the settlement, because it is complex, maybe you don't understand it in detail. But I've read four different assessments from IFS, from LGA and others, Centers for Cities, they all come up with different figures, so I would, as a member, and it must be the same for your party, would like really to understand it. And I don't understand why, two and a bit weeks, I know it's been Christmas in between afterwards, we haven't actually had some information about that. So do let us know, because there are some major changes. The second thing, though, that disappoints me, is that you could have, you could have tried to address the question of whether there are any opportunities in this settlement. Because rest assured, councillor Forbes, your next three Christmases will not be disrupted so much, because you've got a four-year settlement, and that's what you and other parties asked for, so we should at least welcome that. There's actually fairer base allocations, which surprises me, fairer than the last five years.
Councillor, you have a red light.
Different influences, of course, to our disadvantage because of our local council tax base, and some additional money to support care for the elderly. So let's have a debate, as I think councillor was suggesting, on some of the things that we can make work for ourselves, rather than constantly chucking bricks. But we can chuck bricks if you want to chuck bricks, but we are equally willing to cooperate with you to do the lobbying and also to try and make the best out of what we've got.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Beecham?
I'm almost quite taken by councillor Faulkner's reference to civil war and the Labour Party. There certainly are certain tensions, but it is a bit more impressive than eight politically bald men fighting over a threadbare comb, which is the case of... We did in fact have some policies, believe it or not, at the last election around local government, in particular those pressing for a fairer funding formula, which councillor Faulkner has implicitly acknowledged had been part of our policy. We certainly need to develop more. And it's not just a question of finance. What we are seeing is this government now ideologically bent on effectively abolishing the state. That's what's happening, the state national and the state local. They are withdrawing from a role of supporting and empowering local decisions. They, to use a phrase which I've used rather too often, they pass the buck without passing the bucks time and time again. They see no role clearly for local government in education. I'm concerned that the movement towards combining health and social care will also impose greater burdens for local government than actual real opportunities. And in any event, the responsibility will be of problems in the NHS will no doubt be transferred to a local level under whatever forms subsequently developed. But there is a very clear deliberate policy to scale down radically the level of financial support. And this has not gone unnoticed, I'm pleased to say, by Conservative local government leaders nationally, including from such deprived areas as Surrey, where the leader of the county council is regularly heard complaining about what's going on. And of course, Mr Cameron has now received a sort of postal tutorial in the impact of policies on the rather better-off county that he represents, with what effect remains to be seen. The current chairman of the Local Government Association is the leader of a, I can't remember the name of it, small district council in the east of England, however, has come in, and I'm looking forward to his maiden speech, which he promises will not be on the local government finance settlement, because as with so many of his party colleagues in local government, he is also deeply concerned about what is happening. It isn't just a function of financial difficulties or the deficit, it is a function of a distinctive, quite radical change of the Conservative Party's perspective on what local government should be doing. And that's in a way more serious than simply a financial cut. However, we have to deal with that financial cut and the impact it will have on this very stretched community and this very stretched region. And the consequences for our constituents and all of us in this room and across this region, what is happening and what will continue to happen year after year are profound and deeply disturbing. And I'm glad that this council at least can unite around our opposition to this government's approach.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarthy, you reserve the right to speak.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. We seem to have some kind of commonality across the council chamber tonight, which some of us didn't really expect, so I shall cut quite a lot of what I was going to say. Lord Mayor, the, yeah, I know, because I could look back at my last year's speech and the one before that and the one before that, and I could probably reiterate it all again tonight, but I shan't do that. A couple of comments, Lord Mayor. First of all, leader of council talked about his letter to the Prime Minister in 2012, and he has obviously, as most colleagues will know, written again last year after the Prime Minister wrote to the leader of Oxfordshire. And of course, in Newcastle, we've not yet, he hasn't yet received a response to that, which I think is interesting, because, you know, you raise the issues with the Prime Minister, but he really doesn't want to engage. And I think Nick offered to go and talk to him and explain how the cuts impact on local authorities, and clearly David Cameron isn't interested in that. They are, as councillor Beecham has said, just driving forward their views, and they are totally out of touch and have no... are totally out of touch and have no idea of the impact of what they're doing on local authorities. And I think a kind of example of that is the 2% so-called precept to pay for social care, because clearly that will benefit local authorities that have a high council tax base and not areas like Newcastle, which have huge need. You know, we all know across this council chamber, that will give us about 1.7 million, but you will also know, because the budget is out for consultation, that we're looking at £15 million worth of savings. That is just, you know, the gap is far too wide. They clearly have no concept of what that means. And, you know, when the Chancellor says there are no tax increases, but actually that 2% precept, you know, which is optional for us to consider, you know, in the figures that we've seen, that has been taken into account in the four-year ahead figures, you know, that the government are promising to allow us to have. And so actually, the whole thing just does not make sense. They clearly have no idea. They have no idea about what back office means and how those efficiencies can be delivered, nor do they have any idea about what un earmarked reserves can do, you know, and how few the number of days that would keep us going. You know, yes, I absolutely agree with councillor Lower that we've got to be positive. You will see, the heading of our budget proposals for this year is about investing in the future in the face of austerity, so we are taking that into account, we understand that. And we, as you will also know, are taking serious action around shared services and commercial approaches to trying to find different ways to mitigate the intense changes that will be happening. And maybe last, Lord Mayor, is to say that when you cut local government in the way that they are doing, they don't understand the impact of that on other parts of the system. So, you know, the changes that we're making in social care will have an impact on health spend, and none of that kind of overarching thinking has been taken into account.
You have a red light, councillor.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I support the motion, thank you.
Could I ask, council, is the motion agreed?
Sorry. Leader has a right to reply, as appears it was his motion. Please rise again.
Lord Mayor, I won't say much by way of right of reply, just to say, a couple of weeks before Christmas, I guess like many members, I'm woken up in the morning by the dulcet tones of Nick Robinson and Evan Davis on the Today Programme, and I was listening to the seven o'clock news and heard, or rather, the interview after the seven o'clock news, and heard councillor Kingston being quoted at Nikki Morgan, the Education Secretary, about cuts, and I had a little bit of a panic about what kind of trouble that might get us into. But what that highlighted was that the national media had picked up some of the content of our draft budget consultation, which is currently out for consultation at the moment, and were playing it back to ministers. And the minister had absolutely no understanding about the impact of cuts on the ground. It was yet another example of how detached from reality this government, this current government is. And we've got used to misleading statistics from the Department for Communities and the local government, but one of the most misleading statistics of all is the one that they put out with the local government settlement, which said that by the end of the Parliament, local government would be more or less, have more or less the equivalent cash position as it does at the moment. What they failed to tell people was that they made all sorts of assumptions about each and every local authority, not only putting up council tax by the referendum limit, but also increasing the council tax by the 2% adult social care precept on top of that, and there also being growth in business rates, all of which are locally determined income measures, all of which have to be decided locally, and all of which are not without their risks. And so the government figures, I think, are deeply misleading, and although the settlement is currently out for consultation nationally, and we will be responding to it, therefore it's a little difficult to provide meaningful briefing notes on it at this stage, particularly as we're working through the detail. I will ensure that a proper briefing note is circulated to all members as soon as feasible and possible, which highlights all of these deeply misleading measures which are being talked about by the government, as if the financial crisis in local government has gone away, which it has not, it clearly has not. The responsibility for funding for local services is being shifted to local areas, and many services which have previously relied on national grant to fund them, like adult and children's social care, in the future, by the end of the Parliament, will almost exclusively be reliant on council taxpayers and business rate payers to support them. That will simply entrench inequalities within this country and does nothing to address the long-term systematic problems around demographic change which are driving the use of these services. So there is still a huge long way to go, but it is very encouraging, Lord Mayor, that the opposition group in the chamber are choosing to side with us on this, and collectively we will lead the fight against these deeply damaging cuts in the future.
Thank you, councillor. Could I once again ask, council, is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item number 18, notice of motion, freedom of expression, ask councillor Faulkner to move the motion seconded by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief, and I know I'm going to talk to the motion, but because there is an amendment, I'll just say that, again, I'm happy to accept the amendment. It makes sense not to throw out the baby with the bathwater. So thank you for the amendment and the intention, as I understand it therefore, for the council to unite on it. And just very quickly, you know the background to this, it's all about the buffoon Donald Trump, who topped his ignorant and disgusting remarks about women and Mexicans and Ebola and so on by saying that all Muslims should be stopped from entering the USA. Ridiculous and enforceable, provocative, insulting, of course, it was all of those. But I did find it very disappointing that almost on cue, out came those people who said, ban him, stop incoming to this country. Newspaper headlines in the Chronicle said there were those locally who actually wanted Newcastle to have the distinction of being the first city to ban him, and they were described as community leaders, not sure who they were. But I accept their sincerity of their feelings, but not the way in which they were expressing them. And it did remind me of two or three things that have happened in the past, which this council has debated either in the chamber or in committee. One, present leader of the council will remember, he tried to persuade us to stop Chubby Brown from appearing at City Hall, that rather offensive and unfunny comedian, but we felt that freedom of expression applied to him as well. And I do notice that Chubby Brown will appear next at the City Hall on the 20th of February 2016. I won't be taking buying a ticket. We have debates in this chamber, which councillor Todd and others have participated in, about what attitude we should take about the BMP and EDL and others marching in the city. Should we ban them? Well, we can't, only the Home Secretary can, and only on advice of the police that they couldn't contain it. But, you know, I thought it was much better, and this is what we did, to march together, to hold public meetings, to counter and challenge their evil philosophy, rather than say, let's just ban them. Because, you know, this, whether it's, whether it's EDF or National, British National Party or Puggera or Trump or whoever, then it's really, it's really... Eh? Oh, sorry. Thank you pardon. Well, them as well. Whoever it is, whoever it is. You know, you're kind of playing to their hands, don't you, with this rhetoric about banning them? You make martyrs of them, and that's what they want. And I do find it's ironical that France, which has more laws restricting free speech than virtually any other Western democracy, actually has the most virulent and well-supported far-right organisation in the Western world. So just think about that the next time we say, let's ban them. And for people who we disagree with deeply and fervently, let's make sure we challenge and counter them in the right way, instead of seeking to repress them in an authoritarian and illiberal way.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Ashby to second.
Lord Mayor, I second the motion. I disagree with Donald Trump, but I defend his rights, his views, even when he's wrong and one doubts his sanity. I usually disagree with Michael Duggar and Kevin Jones and Patna Fadden and most of the time Hillary Benn, but I defend their right to their views, or should we call them certain tensions. Banning people from expressing their views is odious. You don't have to listen to those who hold odious views, you certainly don't ban them, especially from our great city, and not in my name. I'm also greatly concerned about the rise of self-censorship in some universities, which is starting down a slippery slope. Fifteen years ago, Bruno Schmidt, former president of Yale University, dean of Columbia Law School, noted scholar on the US First Amendment, clerk for Earl Warren, the legendary Chief Justice of the United States Supreme Court, put it far better than I ever put on these matters. On many campuses, perhaps most, there is little resistance to growing pressure to suppress and to punish rather than to answer speech that defends notions of civility and community. These campuses are heedless of the oldest lesson in the history of freedom, which is the defensive, erroneous and obnoxious speech is the price of liberty. Values of civility, mutual respect and harmony are rightly prized within universities, but these values must be fostered by teaching and by example and defended by expression. When the goals of harmony collide with freedom of expression, freedom must be the paramount obligation of an academic community. Much expression that is free may deserve our contempt. We may well be moved to exercise our own freedom to counter it or ignore it, but universities cannot censor or suppress speech, no matter how obnoxious in content, without violating their justification for existence. Liberal education presupposes that a liberated mind will strive for the courage and composure to face ideas that are fraught with evil and to answer them. To stifle expression because it's obnoxious, erroneous, embarrassing, non-instrumental, some political or ideological end, quite a part of invading the rights of others, is a disastrous reflection on the ideal of universities. I urge council to support this motion.
Thank you, councillor. councillor McCarthy to move an amendment.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I don't intend to speak, I think there's far too much harmony tonight across the council chamber. So I think, given that the mover of the original motion has accepted our amendment, Lord Mayor, I'm happy to move it formally.
Thank you. councillor McGinnis to second.
First time. I'll second, and I will just pick up on a point that councillor Ashby's made. Universities are bound to have free speech policy and free expression policy, and they've always been an area where students have been able to explore their politics, explore their views, have active, healthy debates. However, there is currently rumbling on in the sector, a conflict of freedom of speech versus safe space, and actually often that's enacted by students' unions under a democratic policy that they pass through their systems, not universities banning speakers. And I just think that's kind of an important distinction to make, because that is a decision of a collective choosing to deny a voice on campus, often where there is a lack of balance or where there's an accusation of harassment. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Todd.
Just briefly, I wanted to correct something that councillor Faulkner said, when I think he was, I'll spread a little disharmony, just to make sure we don't get too unnerved. But I think he was saying that I and actually good many other people have argued for a ban on organisations like the National Front, BMP, EDL, and numbers of others as well, because we disagree with them. It isn't because we disagree with them, it's because it's in the nature of fascist organisations, since that form of organisation developed in the 1920s, 1930s, to use street demonstrations and visits to other cities where other people live, in order to conduct intimidation, harassment and worse. It's not a free speech argument really around that. But I'm happy with the amendment, because that's consistent really with what I'm saying, that as the amendment says, there are roots within the law of dealing with intimidation, harassment and incitement to violence. I'd just like to see those laws applied once and for all.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Teale.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like I'm sure everyone here, I found Donald Trump's comments to be offensive, ignorant and divisive. But in the real world, we can't just wish away things we don't like, and more importantly, if you ban things, they don't go away, they just pop up somewhere else. In a liberal society, offensive views should be challenged, not blocked. Bigots should be exposed and defeated in argument, and big-mouthed cretins should be ridiculed, not turned into martyrs. Liberal Democrats believe in free speech, where extremist ideas are beaten and discredited in public debate. I think a lot of people don't actually understand the depth of ignorance there is in America about certain issues. I was coming back from a conference in America a few years ago, and sitting waiting for my luggage, watching the carousel go round, and I got chatting to this American gentleman, who was very pleasant, and we talked about people he knew in England, and how he'd like to go and visit them one day, and out of the blue, he said, and what do you think of the Muslim threat? And I just looked completely blank, and said, what Muslim threat? And he had no idea that there wasn't actually a problem in Britain, because he'd been told by Fox News, presumably, that there was a huge Muslim threat, and it seemed that a perfectly normal American had no idea that what he was being told was garbage. So I don't think we can totally blame the Americans. And Donald Trump did end his comments by saying, until we know what on earth is going on, and I think it's about time somebody got him over to Britain and actually showed him what's going on, and that he actually understands that there isn't a problem, rather than banning him.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Lewin? No? councillor Gallagher?
I'll be very brief, Lord Mayor. In fact, I just agree with what councillor McGinnis said about the universities, they should always remain open and be a place where there can be very open debates. I think some universities have been banning people because they perhaps thought that what people would say would be offensive to others. But, you know what, one important aspect of living in a free society is, you don't have the right not to be offended. You know, someone will at some stage say something that offends you, and the way you challenge that is by debating with them, not by trying to ban them.
Thank you. councillor Salidas.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, I'm just going to add a few comments to what's been said already. Let's not forget that banning and censorship can work in both directions, as been, you know, sort of left-wing governments have banned free speech of right-wing protesters or whatever across the world, you know, from the Soviet Union to, as my colleague here says, Venezuela, places like that, clamping down on the free speech of right of centre or right-wing citizens. To me, all of those are wrong. Everyone should have the right to say what they want. And let's not forget, you know, a certain recent government, which is dear to the heart of people across the other side of the chamber, who was deliberately cracking down on, for example, environmental protesters, branding them as terrorists, locking them up a handful of years ago, for example, so, you know, and what's been happening in other dictatorships around the world, of both left-wing and right-wing dictatorships banning free speech. To be honest, you know, it needs to be, it needs to rise above the left-wing and the right-wing, you know, old stereotypes. It's all about freedom of speech, and that has to be a good thing for politics, economy and society. So this is why this motion is very important, to have free speech and not ban it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Cook?
I'd simply like to congratulate councillor McGinnis on her made speech, Lord Mayor, it may have been over.
councillor Faulkner, respond, please.
Thank you, colleagues, for the contributions. I wouldn't ban councillor Cook from his comment, because I was going to congratulate, but thank you for the speech, councillor McGinnis. Apologies to Nigel if I misrepresented his views, he was deliberate, and I think we have some harmony, and I doubt whether there's much else to say.
Thank you. Yeah. councillor McGinnis, can I formally thank you for your maiden speech? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
As amended?
Agreed.
Yep, thank you. Now, the guillotine has fallen. There was one piece of business left, which is in the name of councillor Faulkner. Could we ask you how you wish us to address this?
Next one, please, Lord Mayor.
Right, thank you. Right, thank you. Could I formally close this meeting? Thank you.